I apologize for the tardiness. It's been trying for 15 minutes to log in.
Where is?
All right, we're good.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening. Welcome to the July 21, 2021, meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. To begin the meeting, I'm just going to read from the, from the agenda. Pursuant to Senate Bill 2475, which was signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021, this meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. All right, so the first item we have on the agenda this evening is 35 Presidential. Laura Scott is the appellant seeking to appeal a building permit which was granted for an addition with connector to a sports barn in the residential district. Do you have the, you have the notice to read, Katie?
Yes. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting on Wednesday, July 21, 2021, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of Laura Scott, 35 Presidential Drive, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking an appeal to a building permit for an addition with connector to a sports barn at 35 Presidential Drive.
So, we, we will hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative. I just wanted to briefly say, you know, to be clear, the, it is an appeal, but it's, it's appealing a building permit that was granted by the building commissioner. So, this is not a request for relief from zoning code. This is asking for an administrative review for a permit that was granted. So, do we have somebody who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant, Katie?
Yep, we have a bunch of hands up. And I'm not sure, so I see Ms. Scott, bring her over and maybe she can tell us.
Okay, yep.
So, Katie, thank you very much, and thank you to everyone on this board. Thank you for all the time that you put in this endeavor. What I'd like to do is immediately hand it over to my representative, Ginny Kramer. If you could invite her in, I'd like her to start on my behalf the discussion, but thank you. I do want to add, there are others that do want to speak, but I'd like Ms. Kramer to join.
Actually, a point of order, Katie, I forgot. Before we go any further, Craig Nicholson is unable to participate this evening as a, as a rec member. So, I'm appointing Doris to step in as the alternate candidate for the, for these hearings. All right. Ms. Kramer, Kramer.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you, members of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Ginny Kramer, and I am an attorney in Concord, Massachusetts. I am representing, I'm here tonight to represent Ms. Scott with respect to her appeal of the building permit that was issued back in early April. I just wanted to, before I start, I just want to ask whether the board members have had the opportunity to review the memorandum of law submitted yesterday.
Yes, I've reviewed that. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, great. I don't want to, you know, belabor it, but, you know, essentially, this building permit was issued in error. As a point of order, the Building Department has cleared up the issue with respect to the issuance of the permit during the state of emergency declared by the Governor of the Commonwealth regarding COVID in that apparently the posting that only emergency building permits would be issued during the pandemic had been revoked for some time. I did not receive the attachments to the letter that, that he sent, but I'll just put that issue to one side for now. You know, assuming that, you know, that that order to not issue building permits that were not emergent was validly revoked. So, I'll just assume that for purposes of, of this evening. Your zoning bylaw and Massachusetts law, as, as interpreted by the courts for, you know, well over 75 years, requires this board and before the building inspector to examine not only the structure that the applicant was seeking to have permitted, but also the use of that structure. So, this is a common mistake that is made, is conflating the structure and the use. And as I've set forth in my memo, you know, whether or not this structure could be permitted as an addition, this board and the building inspector before it needs also to examine the use. So, clearly, this enormous sports barn is not intended for residence of, for residential use for human habitation. Rather, this is an enormous sports barn which rivals and perhaps exceeds the size of the single-family dwelling to which it purports to be attached. It is also, because of the lot configuration, which I set forth in Exhibit Number Two, so you can see, it is also aggressively cited right next to my client's home. So, you know, essentially, what my understanding is, is that the building commissioner determined that the sports barn was allowed as an addition. The structure was allowed as an addition because although at first it was not, there was no interior access to the sports barn from the home, but the applicant added that in the third stall of the garage in order to have it qualify as an addition, which they believed made it allowable as a permanent structure. But what nobody paid any attention to is the fact that this is not a residential use. This use is clearly recreational. This is a, an enormous 35-foot-from-grade sports barn which has two locker rooms, a lounge, and a basketball court in it. And this is proposed along with several outdoor features to which my clients have no objection. The sports barn is not allowed under your zoning bylaw, Section 174-2B, which, as I've set forth in my memo, discusses accessory buildings or uses. So, you know, whether or not you can say the building is allowed as an addition, an accessory use can only be allowed if it is customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the building. And as the phrase accessory use has been interpreted by the Massachusetts courts for many, many decades, an accessory use has to be analyzed with the question of whether the use is one that is so necessary in connection with a one-family detached house or so commonly to be expected with such a home that it cannot be supposed that your zoning bylaw prohibits it. So, you know, clearly, you know, sports barn is not explicitly allowed within your zoning bylaw. But if this is allowed to go forward, and, you know, this, this could happen to anybody, that they could find their home under the shadow of an enormous sports barn that's bigger than the house to which it's purportedly attached. I would submit that this is not a customary use. We are not aware of any other sports barn in the town of Southborough attached to a residential dwelling or anywhere else. So, I mean, to, it just simply can't meet the test of being customary. The other way that this has been phrased by the Massachusetts courts is whether it has commonly, habitually, and by long practice been established as reasonably associated with the primary use, which here, of course, is residential use. So, while there are some recreational uses such as swimming pools or tennis courts that can meet those standards, to the extent that those are located on the exterior of a building and not within a hulking 35-foot-from-grade structure, those are customary and those have been customarily allowed. There are a couple of features of this particular property that make this especially noxious and offensive. As set forth in Exhibit Two, the lot configuration, the very long and narrow lots, you know, put these properties and the homes really close together, notwithstanding the fact that the lots meet the, you know, the lot size requirement because they're elongated rectangles. And the fact that the home at 35 Presidential is cited, you know, in the forward part of the lot as compared to my client's home means that the sports barn erected behind that house is roughly level to her home. So, when she hooks out of her bedroom windows now, she, she sees this hulking structure. That's all she can see, which is steel-framed, which the applicant has been furiously constructing while there have been, you know, various delays associated with the pandemic and other, and other issues. You know, everybody is struggling and, you know, in this environment to, to complete business. I understand that as I'm town council to the town of Grafton, and the abrupt yanking of the emergency order by the governor. I, we understand what all the delays are about. But the fact is, is that this building permit was issued in April, and the residents, my clients as well as other abutting residents have been subjected to extreme noise, vibration, while everybody during a pandemic is attempting to work from home. While they're blasting, not, they weren't, I don't think that they actually blasted, but jackhammering through a significant amount of ledge to dig the deep foundation that is necessary to support a building of this scale. So, I will, you know, take any questions that board members have. But I just want to mention briefly that the plans depict seven off-street parking spaces. You know, I'm not sure why any personal recreational use would require seven off-street parking spaces in addition to the three-car garage here. This is a shared driveway with my client. So, there, that calls into question whether, you know, the shared driveway is going to be overburdened. But, you know, seven accessory parking spaces certainly suggests that there's going to be some use beyond that of just the family who resides in this residence. So, you know, essentially, I would submit to the board that, you know, the building inspector aired in, in giving this permit. Also, with respect to the parking spaces, I would note, as I wrote in my memo, there is a guest locker room. So, this is not, you know, a, a sports barn that is proposed just for use of the family that's going to be residing. And I would suggest to this board that upholding the issuance of this permit will set a horrendous precedent for Southborough and perhaps even beyond Southborough of any single-family house that could, you know, suddenly be dwarfed by what is deemed to be an addition larger than the house potentially. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but what we're asking this board tonight is to order the revocation of the building permits. And my client had requested a view by your members last week. Apparently, you know, that was not possible. So, we're going to withdraw that request, you know, unless the board, for some other reason, seeks to continue the hearing beyond this evening. But, but if the board does continue the hearing beyond this year evening, we would request that the board issue an immediate cease and desist order requiring all construction to stop. As an update to my letter that I, that I sent in yesterday or the day before, I also would like to note that the, the rafters have been dropped off, and some of them have been constructed onto the top, which just heightens the, the height of this. And given the fact that my client's home is, is topographically significantly lower than this, this project site, this is really a giant looming barn that's going to shape our property. And, you know, it, it just, it just should never have been allowed, and we're asking this board to revoke the permits. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Paul, do you want to start off? Do you, do you have some questions?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what I have for questions. I will say this, though, I've never, I've never had a request for an appeal like this in my time on the board. So, it's, I find this interesting. We did have something sort of similar to this a few years back, where an applicant wanted to build a similar-type structure. And, you know, after discussion, it was, it was withdrawn. It was not, it was not connected to the main house, and it exceeded the, it exceeded the height limit. I haven't seen anything about it since, so I guess the, the whole plan was, was dropped. I mean, I do know there are other, I guess, residences, I mean, there's, there's, you know, with, with an indoor basketball. I mean, there, there's one on Presidential. You know, a little different where I guess it's built, you know, right into the house as opposed to a, you know, as opposed to a, you know, a breezeway edition type thing. And it's pretty darn massive. So, you know, I'm not, that's, and it's, I guess, more comments than questions. But, you know, this is very, very interesting nonetheless.
Hey, Paul, what was the property? We were looking at the, that appeal, Craig, excuse me, David, you might, and Debbie, I think you were on the board as well. Remember that one that was totally fishy with, like, they were going to build the tunnel to that accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Yep, the building existed, and that was the plan. There'll be a tunnel, but then they came back and said, there's too much lead.
Yeah, tunnel.
The tunnel. And it, it really wasn't just a little outbuilding. It was almost its own entire house.
That, I, I remember because I, I remember taking a look at that access, accessory structure. And, I mean, that was a huge building. And so, that came to mind, this structure.
Yeah. I agree. Did you have, did you have questions, Mike?
I do, I do. Excuse me, Ginny, if you don't mind, what's the, do you have the square footage of the existing home?
Of the existing home?
Yep.
I don't.
Don't, it's not, I can ask the, I can ask the owner if they're on or they're representing. I'm just trying to get a square footage of the existing home and then the, the, the addition.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have that information.
Don't worry, we can pull that up.
If you look at the, the footprint and the photo.
Yeah, the, the photos, I'm, I'm just trying to get an, an actual area. Because I can see photos to a certain degree, but I'm just trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison on.
Right. And I would note that obviously the sports barn is not intended to be, you know, to have a second floor on it. So, it's really about the, you know, the footprint as opposed to, but yeah.
No, I, I understand that. And I also didn't know if you had the approximate of the height. I believe I had seen that earlier, but I just don't have it at my fingertips.
I, I think the, the home is about approximately 400,000, 4,000 square feet. And the footprint of the proposed sports barn is about 3,300 square feet.
Okay. We'll just double-check that. I want to get those. And do we have the, do we have the set height, approved height?
The height is 35 feet from grade, but again, because the...
Right. I got the topography of the land.
Exactly, yeah. And I, I did go out and take a look at it over the weekend.
Yeah. My cousin lives on Presidential, so I've swung by a couple of times to look at it.
Yeah, and, and I have to say that I don't think this person on the planet wouldn't be offended by this hulking structure looming outside.
No, we got, we got it. But those are my two questions at the moment, David.
Debbie?
I have, I have a question about, I'm trying to understand what section of the zoning code is in violation. And I heard you mention the definition of an accessory building, and you read the definition. And I'm looking in the zoning code, and that is the definition. And that's also my interpretation of the definition. But what, what section of the zoning code would you say is in violation? Obviously, that wasn't put in in the original application. And I'm still trying to understand what, which part of the code.
Well, I mean, with respect to the, the zoning bylaw, the, as I set forth in footnote five of my memo, I'm going to handle it too. The zoning bylaw explicitly prohibits more than one principal use of the property. And that's 174-8C2, which states that not more than one principal permitted use should be located on any lot. You know, with some exceptions which are not applicable here. So, you know, it allows some exceptions if, if the use is otherwise permitted in the district or if such uses or buildings are deemed to be compatible, meet the requirement 174-9, and improve circulation of land use patterns, none of which I would assert could be complied with here. Additionally, the parking spaces that they're, that they're proposing for seven additional cars is a violation of 174-82. And, you know, they're, they're, they're required to get a special permit for that. So, the building inspector didn't even require that, notwithstanding the fact that the plan is clearly depicted, seven cars parked on, on their driveway. But, but, you know, in addition to the violations of the zoning bylaw, it's a violation of Massachusetts law with regard to accessory uses as it's been interpreted by the courts for many decades. So, in other words, it's very common to conflate structures and uses, but they're actually two separate examinations. And in order to be, as I stated before, an allowable accessory use, it has to be necessary in connection with a single-family home, necessary. So, obviously, a sports barn is in no way necessary. Or, if it's not necessary, it can be allowed as an accessory use if it is so commonly to be expected with a house that, that you can't assume that the zoning bylaw prohibited it, such as a shed to store your lawnmower, you know, even if it's not explicitly allowed. I mean, that's such a reasonable thing that nobody would argue, while the zoning bylaw, since it doesn't specifically say shed, must prohibit it. This is a, an enormous sports barn. So, I mean, whether or not it exists, in, in my information, is that, that the one that was referred to was constructed along with the home at the same time, which makes it a different situation legally. But, you know, nobody can, can argue that it's so commonly to be expected that a single-family home would have a sports barn with two locker rooms, a lounge, and all this additional equipment. And again, I think that, that, you know, the giveaway here that this was, you know, a little bit of a, of a, you know, I don't, I don't want to characterize it, but, you know, originally submitted as a sports barn, which wasn't allowed. And then it was connected by a breezeway to the garage, and, and a door was added into the third stall of the garage. But if you look at the, at the renderings of the building, that's clearly, that third stall of the garage is clearly not meant to be the actual entrance, as there are two other entrances. That entrance was added later, and that entrance would not be accessible if a car was parked in the third stall of the garage. So, you know, I think that that is the tell that gives away, you know, what the scheme is here to try to, to jam this giant sports barn into compliance with the zoning bylaw. And maybe they did that with regard to the structure, but they certainly did not accomplish that with regards to the use.
Thank you. And my next question, second only other question is, um, so I have a question on the procedure. And because we have in, on the, on the Building Department website, a request for an enforcement complaint form. And once that is signed, it becomes public information. And I believe that's the process to actually file officially with the town a grievance on enforcement. I mean, others on the board can help me out here. I pulled it up tonight. And it's a very simple form, and it's right on the Building Department. And says that once it's, you know, requested, it becomes on, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 4, 726. It becomes public information. And I wonder if you have filled that out? I know you've been working with the building inspector. I believe once you fill this form out, it goes to the building inspector. But it's the official process as far as I know, and just wondering if you have started that process.
So, that's a separate process. A request for enforcement of the zoning bylaw is actually a separate process from an actual appeal of the building permits. So, when a building permit is issued, there is a time period within which an aggrieved party, which, you know, directed by the, would, would, would qualify as that, can appeal the building permit. And, you know, once the building permit is appealed, the applicant for the building permit, any construction that they undertake, they undertake at their own risk, knowing that, you know, there's an appeal and the board hasn't had the opportunity to review the issuance of the building permit. So, because that happened in April, and this matter was continued a number of times for various reasons, the, you know, the applicant could have waited to see what this board thought of the building inspector's issuance before proceeding with construction, but elected not to do that. And it's clear from case law, under General Law, Chapter 48, that the proceeding with construction while a, a permit is under appeal is at the applicant's risk. So, a request for enforcement is something that doesn't have to meet the timelines for actual appeal of the issuance of a permit. So, somebody could request enforcement outside of those timelines for various reasons. But you would be precluded from actually appealing the issuance of a permit if you didn't do so within the time required by the statute.
Thank you.
Anything else, Debbie? You're good.
I know, I'm, I'm good. That's it.
Doris? Do you have any questions?
A lot of my questions are covered. And I just have a, a small question. So, thank you, Paul and Mike, regarding the size of the house. I did go out to the property. It, just at a single look, the addition does seem to be 75% of the main dwelling. And you gave me the square footage, maybe even 80% of it. Could you just, Ginny, if you could tell me the dimensions of this breezeway? Is it, I couldn't really tell from the plan. Is it just, you're saying it's an afterthought, maybe? Is it, you know, is it just a, because I couldn't really see that from the construction very well. Just, is it just a small porch walkway?
So, the breezeway is, as depicted on the plan... Um, so the breezeway is, as depicted on the plans, is, is not that small, actually. Um, I'm trying to see if um, there's an actual measurement on any of the plans.
Ten by, you know, ten by ten, twenty by twenty.
Um, let's see, the guest locker room, sorry, my eyes are old and it's not bright enough in here. Um. It says the guest locker room is seven by six by eight, um, but seven feet, six inches by eight feet, six inches. And that's approximately half the size of the breezeway. So it's either fourteen, fifteen feet wide or eighteen feet wide um, coming off the garage. Oh wait, in, in the mudroom here, there's, there's a mudroom as well, which, you know, you want your sports.
It's attached. It's attached. It's not attached by a um, an incidental walkway. It's indeed attached to the house.
Correct.
Okay, that's a question. My other question had to do with, um, this is the um, letters I've seen through the day regarding uh, notice that permits uh, could not be issued for anything besides essentials. And somehow there's a mishap with COVID. The, it was just came down this morning. Um, there was, you could not get this kind of permit. Special permit. You couldn't.
Yeah, so.
Could you just say that in more layman terms to me?
Sure.
Positioning on that?
Yeah, so when I um, when I first um, was contacted by my client and took a look at the building department's website, she brought to my attention the fact that when you click on to the Southboro Building Department, there's a, a, a giant um, notice saying attention and it states that you can only get um, emergency permits until the state of emergency is lifted. So I'm curious why a sports barn qualifies as an emergency permit. However, the um, building, I think it was the assistant, assistant building inspector today sent a letter, um, which purportedly had attachments. I haven't seen the attachments, but I, you know, taking um, the assistant building inspector's um, letter at, at face value, which I'm sure that um, you know, that, that they just didn't come through.
So you, you, so Jenny, you, you're just knowledgeable today that this was on the website. It wasn't pre, it didn't pre, was it before your application? Uh, is that a correct statement?
So, so apparently the, the um, notification that only emergency permits or urgent permits would be issued during COVID was revoked some time ago. Um, and it was, it just, the town neglected to remove that from the building's website.
So, um, okay, so just back to my first question. Uh, had this, it, I don't have the answer to if the breezeway is substantially enough um, to say this is attached to the dwelling. We do have other houses with basketball courts in them, in the town. Um, so if it's attached to the dwelling or in the dwelling, um, I would think that's allowed.
Well, again, that goes to the, the, you, you have two things to, to ask when issuing a building permit. One, is the structure allowed? And is.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Okay, so.
It's a use.
Yeah, so they, so, you know, I, I, I will, you know, concede for purposes of today, although I, I think it's clear from the fact that um, y- y- you know, they're entering through the third stall of the garage, um, that, that, that's not a real door. But I'll, you know, I'll, uh, even, you know, arguing for, you know, for the sake of um, this evening that that um, is a real door and that is the place that they intend to have uh, people enter from. Even if the structure is allowed as an addition, which I would disagree with, but even if you believe that, the use is not allowed. This is a recreational use. Um, and it's um, you know, it's a, it's a second primary use of the property, which is not allowed by your zoning bylaw. And it's, i- if it's a principal use, it's not allowed, it's explicitly not allowed by your zoning bylaw. If it's an accessory use, it's also not allowed by your zoning bylaw because it's not customary or necessary. So even if there's one or two homes in Southboro that have enormous sports barns, um, y- y- you know, that have been approved, and if they haven't been appealed or examined, it doesn't really matter if they've been approved. But it's not something that anyone would consider necessary. And it's, even if there is a couple of them, it's certainly not customary. Um, you wouldn't say, whoa, I'm not going to buy a house that doesn't have a sports barn. I mean, i- i- it's not like a kitchen. It's a sports barn with two locker rooms, a lounge, uh, and other accoutrements. Um, so, you know, I would submit.
Like an entertainment center.
Well, i- it's like a, a, you know, a thirty-five foot from grade entertainment center. So that's not.
It's not, if it's, if it's over the height restriction.
I- i- it's about whether it's customary or not. I mean.
Okay.
On a video game room where, you know, with a TV that you're, or a, a, you know, or a home theater that's, you know, a, a, a small room. I mean, this.
We have, we have ten and fifteen thousand square foot homes in town.
I, I would still submit to you that it's neither um, customary nor necessary to have a sports barn. It just isn't. I mean, I, whether you have, you know, enormous houses, uh, it, uh, a sports barn is not customary or necessary um, to the single-family residence.
You really helped me a lot. Thank you very much, Jim.
You're welcome.
Um, did, uh, and Jenny, did you have a any answer as far as the size of the breezeway goes for Doris? Do you, do you know what that is?
It's, it's between fifteen and eighteen feet wide. Um, and the length of the breezeway is um, I mean, it, you know, there's a locker room, a bathroom, uh, mechanical storage. There, there's all kinds of things in there. Um, but it's um, I mean, it looks like its length is something maybe twenty feet, twenty, between twenty and twenty-five feet uh, before it um, it, it buffs out to the um, full size of the play court, lounge, and pool equipment storage facilities.
Okay. Um, so I guess, I mean, I, I understand what it is you're arguing and I, and, and I, I guess, hopefully this isn't a dupes question, but um, is there something in the application other than what you're observing that would say this is a second you, this is a second use, this is a recreational use above and beyond what a homeowner might, you know, put up a, a basketball, you know, basketball uh, hoop in their driveway?
Yeah, um, so um, your, your zoning bylaw um, sets forth that an accessory building or use is a building structure or use. And it calls, it's, it states or use several times, which shows you, you know, that you need to look at both the structure and the use, or it wouldn't repetitively say structure or use. Um, if it's summarily incidental and subordinate to the principle of permitted use um, and um, i- i- and not prohibited by this chapter, that zoning bylaw makes it clear that only, not only must a proposed structure be permitted, but the use must be permitted as well. And when you're talking about accessory uses, because again, as I stated in the set forth in the memo, it can either be a second primary use, which is not, which is explicitly not allowed by your zoning bylaw, or it can be an accessory use. Those are the only two choices. So this is a recreational use because we know that people aren't going to be dwelling in the sports barn, right? It's not a bedroom. It's not someplace that people are going to be dwelling. So that means it's either going to be another principal use, or it's going to be an accessory use. Your bylaw prohibits two primary uses, which means the only thing it could possibly be is an accessory use. And when you look at the definition of an accessory use, it is a use that is so necessary in connection with a one-family detached house or so commonly to be expected with such a house that you can't assume the zoning bylaw prohibited. Again, my example that I would give you would be, you know, in uh, um, a, a shed where you would keep your ride-on mower or um, a doghouse or um, you know, you know, some other small uh, outbuilding that you know, would be used for regular um, residential purposes. So this is not what that is. This is a recreational use. It's clearly a recreational use. I don't think anybody could argue that this.
But that, but that's, that's what you're saying is, you're just by observation, you're saying it's a recreational use. There's nothing in the, in the, in the, in the application or the permit that says anything about a recreational use.
No, they studiously avoided uh, calling any attention to the use, but I would submit that a um, you know, a sports barn with a basketball court, lock, a locker room, guest locker rooms.
Yeah, and, and just if I could, I mean, I, I, I think we, we get the point.
Yeah.
Locker rooms and the, I, I, we get that. We don't need to keep going over that.
Yeah.
Um, but uh, there, there, and again, I, 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 I don't mean to have to repeat things, but you're, you're saying there's not a section of the code necessarily that Debbie asked about that's in violation. You're really saying it's, it's either, it's either an accessory use. You're really loo- looking at it from a use perspective.
Correct.
So it's, it's not, it's, in terms of the building requirements, it's not violating anything. It's really just the use.
Correct. It's a use, which is, which, under your zoning bylaw, you have to examine it. Right.
All right.
And just, just um, to be clear, the uh, breezeway is about two hundred and fifty square feet of the uh, thirty-three hundred and forty square feet of the, of the um, you know, entire footprint. So it's a massive part of the footprint.
Okay. Um, I, I, no, I'm just going to say, I, I, I think probably for most of us, like Paul said, Paul's the longest-serving member on the board. I think we struggle a little bit just in knowing what, you know, the, the code is for the Board of Appeals to, to take an appeal. And appeals are typically on, you know, denial of a permit, not on the approval of a permit. Uh, special permit, which doesn't apply, variance, which doesn't, I, I, I would say doesn't apply. So um, I mean, we can certainly entertain further commentary from a butters, but uh, um, I, I, I'm just going to say, I, I, I do feel a little hamstrung in that it, there doesn't seem to be a clear path here that says we're going to issue a cease and desist order on a permit that was, that was granted by the building commissioner. Um, Katie, do we have other people who want to speak?
Yes, we have, um, I think Attorney Gould, who has his hand up. Would you like me to bring him over? And the um, homeowner. Would you like me to bring him over?
Sure.
Uh, first of all, I'm just going to ask, is Julianne available?
I don't believe so.
Okay, because I thought she had told me earlier today that she was going to try to be in on this call, but she did tell me that she was going to send a letter and attachments to the board. Uh, Katie, I don't know if you received it from her or if the board has received it.
Yes. Yep, it was forwarded to the board.
Okay. So if she is not here, um, first of all, did the board get a chance to read Julianne's letter and her attachments?
Uh, I did.
Okay, thank you. Um, as, as you can see from her letter, there may have been a mistake that for a period of time, this information about COVID-related essential versus non-essential uh, building permits may have been taken down and then put up. And in fact, it was quite clear that it was intended to be for COVID protection starting last March and April of twenty, when the governor had an emergency order in effect and was telling people to stay home and even essential workers had to fit certain categories to go in. Since that time, most cities and towns have removed those and what they are now doing and what Julianne says in her letter. And now on the website, and I'm quoting, it says, uh, starting in May, but if, on May twentieth, she published an update saying permits, permits are now being reviewed and are long, no longer on hold due to the COVID nineteen emergency. And then she says on July twenty twenty, she reiterated that they have removed to normal with the only difference is that safety measures, including social distancing, face masks, hand washing, et cetera. So I want to point that out. The attachment that she included listed all of the building permits that were given for additions or new building construction or remodels and alteration. And they are single-spaced and they take up, I did not count them, but they take up uh, seven and a half pages, single-spaced, that it looks like at least twenty.
She said, she says in the, in the notes, two hundred and fifty permits.
Okay. Um, oh yeah, she handwrote that. Thank you. So in talking with her, she said that she reviewed the permit carefully and I guess your building inspector is not around now, whether it's vacation or whatever. But she had been involved as well. And what she said to me is that there are similar uses, even one on Presidential, that was permitted for a sports barn that is a good size. And that there is absolutely nothing in this letter that changes her mind that this is a totally legal building and use. I'd like to just follow up with a couple of things that Ginny has stated. She said that sports are not an accessory use to inter-residential district. First of all, we're not asking for an accessory building with an accessory use, but I can tell you, I live in Northborough, my office is in Worcester, but I do a tremendous amount of real estate conveyancing and zoning and permitting in eastern Worcester County. And I can tell you that I have many clients. In fact, I'm going to be the attorney on the very next hearing. And two neighbors, side by side, they both have sports courts on their property. That is clearly not a, a use that would not be allowed. One has a, in fact, they both have pools and sports courts. They happen to be outdoors, but there is no distinction on whether sports courts are allowed. I mean, back to when I was a kid, all kinds of homes have basketball courts. They used to be at the end of the driveway, but in a more upscale environment, and Southboro certainly is, people are now building half basketball courts, some outside and some inside. And in surrounding communities, when you start going east of Southboro as the socioeconomic level increases, there are lots of these being built and they are all associated with residential. I'd like to now correct a couple of other things that Ginny said that, I'm not accusing her of bad conduct, but I think they're simply wrong. Number one, in her letter, her footnote four says it is unlikely that the project proponents intends to forego use of the third stall of the garage to allow the proposed door to the sports barn to be functional instead of using the door depicted in Arrival one and Arrival two. Well, clearly she has not been in my client's home and she has, neither she nor the neighbor has a right to be there, but I have been there. And I can tell you that that third garage bay is an extended and very much longer than usual garage bay. And they will still be able to use that garage and there will still be a wide opening available to walk out to this addition to their building. And the building is not just a sports court. I want everybody to understand that. Um, when I went over and asked my client, and I've had a conversation with the architect, who is. When I went over and asked my client, and I've had a conversation with the architect, who is on the Zoom call tonight, and if we need him, we can get him. The addition is not just going to be a sports court, but he does have two kids who are teenagers. They're very involved in sports. They're both young teenagers. And he wants a safe environment where they can at all times of year, not just in the summer, invite their friends over so that they can play. Some people have a big rec room in a basement. Some people put on big additions for rec rooms. I know when I was growing up, we had a separate room added to the house and we had a pool table and a ping pong table. That was, and my parents certainly were not wealthy, but in this case, if people have the means, they're absolutely allowed to put an addition. Now, Ginny keeps referring to this as a breezeway. I would suggest by definition, a breezeway is typically a roofed, sometimes open passage connecting two buildings. By her own admission, this connecting room, it's not a breezeway, is fifteen to eighteen feet wide by twenty to twenty-five feet long. That is a room. It is not a breezeway. It's not a trick to try to circumvent the zoning bylaw. We have a successful individual who wants to provide safe recreation for his kids and would be very comfortable twelve months a year inviting them over to his home so that they can either watch TV or listen to music, or if the parents want to, as my client said to me, it's a gathering space, not just for his kids, but for family and friends. They're putting in an audio visual system that will be available for music, for dancing, for movie watching, whatever it is they're going to do. These are all clearly accessory uses to a residence. And this is not a trick to put a four-foot wide breezeway to connect another building. This is clearly a room and the architetchurols and the building inspector, excuse me, has seen those. This is going to be a very fine-looking building. I haven't even touched on, but if we have a landscape architect who was from Northborough and I have seen his work many times. In fact, he's on the Design Review Committee in Northborough. And he's sort of the expert when it comes to the Design Review Committee on landscaping and making it look good for neighbors. And he has done that here. I've seen his plans. He's got a rose garden. He's got taller evergreens that will largely block the view of this. But this is not a for rent sports center. This is not a for rent movie watching area. This is a family, children and friends facility where, like somebody already pointed out, homes are being built larger and larger. Many of the homes that I've represented people buying in Southborough are anywhere from seven to ten thousand square feet. The combination of these two is not as large as some of those homes. What they have simply done is they've taken architecture from the eighties and said, okay, we want to provide this for our family and for our kids. How can we do it? And they met with an architect. The architect worked with them. They talked with the building inspector's office. They found out what they can do and what they cannot do, and it worked out perfectly. One of the things that, in addition to saying that they're not going to use this garage as a doorway, another thing that she says is seeking to avoid the requirements by attaching it. That's not the case. They didn't want to build a separate building because, let's say it's winter time. They don't want for either themselves or their guests or their kids or their friends to have to trudge through snow or ice. This way they can go through a climate-controlled garage into a climate-controlled building that is all attached to the home. It's not much different than putting on a large sun porch that might have either a Jacuzzi pool, or some people put on outdoor buildings, or excuse me, buildings with an indoor, excuse me, indoor pool. And we see that more and more. The idea that recreation is not allowed in a residential area is simply wrong unless that recreation is intended as a commercial venture to rent it out. That is not the case here. The other thing that she says is the proponent can point to no prevalence in Southborough or Mass of massive sports barns attached to single-family dwellings. We don't need to say that they are prevalent in the community merely that it isn't allowed use. And we've already pointed out, and the building inspector pointed out to our client and architect that there's one ride on presidential and there may be others in other parts of town. We have not researched it. Lastly, I want to say some of the comments that Ginny has made, and again, I respect her, I know her firm. But she says that we are putting it right on the edge next to her property. The properties in Presidential were all part of a subdivision back in the eighties, and they are all about a hundred and feet wide. This one is a hundred and fifty feet wide. It is eleven hundred feet long. So the idea that they're squeezing it into a small property is not the case at all. And because they want it to be a part of their home, they're clearly not going to put it way out on the back. And you will not be able to see this building from the street. It provides privacy. It may provide certain people that we don't want to know about. Oh, if this person is building this, maybe they're a very well-to-do family. Maybe when they're not home, we should go to that house. It's much better to design and build this in the rear of the property than in the front to hide the look of the house. Now, the other thing I want to point out, when Ginny says that it is directly adjacent to her client's property, I want to point out the sideline requirement here is twenty feet in residential A. This is forty-four feet, nine inches. It's almost two and a half times what the requirement is to have this type of an addition to the building. The other thing is the garage, they, they are not making this into a garage for commercial use. They're not going to do repair work on vehicles. They're not going to say to people, oh, if you want to come and use a locker room, you can use this, pay us X amount of money. If their kids have friends or if Mr. Jiang or his wife and their friends want to come over, and if they want to play on the sports court, whether it is a pickleball, whether it is basketball, they don't want to make them go through the garage and up to their bedrooms to shower. So it's natural that they would build a facility where both men and women can put their clothing while they go in and enjoy the sports court that's inside this building. Now, the entire building is not a sports court. That is the reason for the higher roof, because if you're playing basketball, you can't have a twelve-foot roof. But if people are going to be there, a significant part of the property near the front is a sitting room. Excuse me, a sitting room. In fact, it's going to be year-round because it's going to be adjacent to the swimming pool that's going to be out there, where they have built a beautiful, they are planning on building a beautiful patio with beautiful landscaping and a fairly good-sized rose garden. Now, it's been mentioned if somebody wanted to build an outdoor basketball court, there would be no issue. And it's been mentioned that, oh, we don't like that the building appears to be too big, but it does meet the bylaw. It is not a different use than is commonly used in a residential district. Most people that have kids want their kids to be able to play on their property. I've seen bocce courts, I've seen basketball courts, swimming pools. That's all commercial, excuse me, residential recreation. If you say you can't have a basketball court, does that mean you can't have a swimming pool? I mean, it's absurd to go that far. So as much as I respect the neighbor who thinks that she would like not to have this building, our landscape architect has designed beautiful landscaping. Could you not be looking at a steel structure?
Right.
It's going to be a beautifully architecturally designed building with a pool and a hot tub and beautiful landscaping and a rose garden and rows of evergreens, so it will be full for twelve months a year. I don't know what else can be asked, and that's why clearly the building inspector and assistant building inspector both agree this is a perfectly allowable use. Thank you for your time.
Could I just ask what the, the screening plan is between thirty-seven and thirty-five? I, I, when you say evergreens, I mean, what, is there some kind of screening that will, would provide Niskat with some privacy?
Yes, there will be two things. Absolutely. Thanks for asking. Jeff, while I'm doing this, if you would allow Jeff Jiang, the owner, to share his screen, he, Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes. Can I share the screen chair?
Yes, you can.
Okay. And while he's getting ready to do that, I will tell you, we also have, I believe, Dave Verren of Verren Landscaping on this call, so he can comment on it. But as you know, around a pool, you also need fencing. So there's going to be fence, this is looking from the corner of the house and the addition.
Yep.
Looking out to where the swimming pool is going to be. On the left, you see a beautiful rose garden. That same type of landscaping you can see continues to the other side of the pool. And behind that, instead of the thin, roughly thirty to four, thirty to thirty-five-year-old evergreens that have gotten very thin between the two properties now, these are going to be extra-large trees that Mr. Verren is ordering for Mr. Jiang to give protection. You'll hear in the next hearing, more and more people that have pools want privacy. So they don't necessarily want people looking out the bedroom of the building next door.
But if I, if I, if I could, could just, we're already an hour into this. Those, so are those evergreen trees? Or in other words, will they be filled in year-round? And then how, how tall are they?
Jeff?
They, they have, we have the very tall trees along the property line now. They're about maybe twenty, thirty feet, but we are adding, we just added eight of twelve to fourteen feet tall green giants, and we, we plan to plant more along the property line so that, you know, by the time like we finish the whole project, so there will be the plants along the property line in every, in every place.
But that, but that will be, will that, will that be screening year-round or will the leaves drop in the fall?
No, this is all evergreens, not.
This is all evergreens.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. I just, I, I mean, I, I think a lot of the points are being made here. I just, I don't want to spend a lot of time reemphasizing them. Uh, thank you for your, 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 your comments, Attorney Gould. Katie, are there, are there other people who want to speak, Laura Butters or?
I see someone named Sandy with their hand up and Dorian Jazinski.
Okay. And I, I'm just going to ask in advance, if, if you could not reemphasize points that were previously made, but bring something new to the table if you have it, please.
And for a point of order, if they can just state their name and their resident.
Oh, yes, yes. You're right. I was.
Nope, but I couldn't agree more. Please make new points and try to keep it brief and, and thank you.
Yep, yep. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. You're right.
All right. It looks like just Dorian has her hand up.
I'm not sure if you can hear me. I know you can't see me.
Uh, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Dorian Jazinski. I am at thirty-three Presidential Drive and I'm on the opposite side of the, of thirty-five Presidential. So I'm on the opposite side of this construction project from Laura Scott. So I have, I just have a few comments. Um, we will lose, or we have lost all our privacy in our backyard. Every tree that was on that lot in that backyard was cut down. Actually, one of my trees was cut down and one, another one of my trees was knocked down. I've already spoken to the builder about it and I believe he's going to take care of that. But, um, we have no privacy at all. They've cut everything down. So I'm not sure what's being done for screening. But I would appreciate to know how my property is being protected. Because our quality of life has been greatly impacted by this project. The only thing we can see is this huge, massive, commercial-looking building in our backyard. I have lived here for twenty-seven years. I moved to Southborough for the charm, the trees, the suburbs. I didn't move here to, to live next door to a huge commercial building and lose my privacy. Um, I know Attorney Gould said that there are other sports barns in Presidential Drive. I've lived here twenty-seven years. I have no knowledge of such a building that exists. So I would actually like to know where that one is because I don't have any knowledge of it. I don't think that's a true statement. Um, I don't want to say to the neighbor, you can't do something in your yard. I have no problem with him building something for his family. I think it's a fabulous thing. It's, it's great to get along with your neighbors and to enjoy each other and to look out for each other. But when your quality of life is impacted as greatly as ours has been since this whole project started, um, our privacy is taken away. It is literally on top of us. This lot was not wide enough to build something of this stature. Um, comparing this building to an outdoor basketball court, in my opinion, is ludicrous. This is not an outdoor basketball court. This is a huge, massive, three thousand square foot, commercial-grade building on top of our homes. We've both lived here for, I've lived here twenty-seven years. That the impact on my family and my life is unfathomable. And I cannot believe the town has just allowed this, like this with no consideration of us in any way, shape or form.
If I could, do, do, maybe either Attorney Gould or Mr. Jiang could ask, answer the question regarding privacy on the other side?
I would be happy to. I believe that David Verren is on the phone. I know I've driven up to Jeff's property twice and I was there just one week ago, and I noticed that at the Jazinski property at thirty-three Presidential, they have a, apparently a cabana house. I'm assuming there's a pool. And that is, I believe, fairly close to the lot line. I believe it's twenty feet. This building is going to be twenty-five feet from the lot line. But I know Mr. Jiang and I'm sure Mr. Jiang would be very happy to have Mr. Verren come out to the property and meet with this property owner, as he had already met with Laura Scott. Um, and he is willing to meet with Ms. Jazinski or her husband or anybody who's at the property. Uh, Jeff, unless you tell me I'm wrong, I know I've represented you long enough to know that you always try to do right by neighbors. So I'm sure they'd talk for this and that they would do something that would mutually satisfy the neighbors as well as Mr. Jiang.
So is, is there a plan right now to put screening on that side to shield from thirty-three Presidential?
Actually, as I look at the property, even on the plan that was attached to the letter from Ginny, it looks to me like number thirty-three is set much closer to the street.
But, but if I, if I could, I'd, I'd really like to stick to the, the question.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I answer your question? We, we are in the process of designing the, the, the landscape along that the the property line between thirty-five and the thirty-three. And, uh, so Dorian, I'm not aware of cutting your, I mean.
Right. I, 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 I kind of don't want to go down the rabbit hole too far here, but it, it's really just a question of, you know, you, I guess, making, you, you're, you're, you're stating that you'll provide screening for Ms. Scott. I think it's only reasonable to ask if you're going to do the same thing on the other side. And I, I really don't want to get into a tree got knocked down. That's, that's not what we're here for.
We, we will.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else or?
Dorian has her hand up again, as does Laura Scott.
Does Dorian have something more to add?
No, I actually asked a question. A statement was made that there's another sports barn in Presidential Drive, and I was actually asking, where is that located?
Good. All right, that's fair. Do we have any answer to where there's another sports barn located in Presidential?
Thirteen Presidential Drive. They have a basketball hoop inside their house.
That's not a sports barn. That's not like this one. That's, that's was built in the house when that house was built. That was part of the original plan of that house. That's not an addition. It's not a three thousand square foot sports barn, so I don't, I just don't appreciate that Attorney Gould misrepresented something as important as this. This is impacting our lives, and I don't want to have a problem with my neighbor. I'm, I'm not harboring any ill will to him and his family at all. That's not the problem. The problem is the height of this building is impacting the quality of our lives, and we have lived here for twenty-seven years. So I think consideration needs to be given to us, and I understand doing screening, but it's going to take ten years for those trees to grow tall enough to block out. Mr. Gould, yes, it is. It's going to take ten years to cover that.
I think that the.
I know, but he's shaking his head. He's being inappropriately behaved, and he's an attorney. He should know better.
All right, if we could just stick to the subject. We asked about screening. Mr. Jiang is saying he would commit to it. All right, that's, that's what we wanted to answer. Okay. Ms. Scott, you had your hand raised as well?
Yes, yep, am I off mute?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, thank you, everyone, and, you know, we went out of this a long time, and I appreciate it. But as Dorian mentioned, this has been incredibly challenging and stressful for those of us who've been in this neighborhood for twenty-five years. I want to talk about the screening, and just to remind everyone, when this neighborhood, and I think it was the attorney from Gould in Edinburgh, mentioned that when this neighborhood was originally designed, it was, a lot of attention was put into the house, the placement of the houses, because these lots are very narrow. And thirty-seven and thirty-five were built at the same time by the same builder on a shared driveway. And the houses were sited specifically in such a manner to ensure privacy for both parties. I bought this home from the builder, from Robbie Wellin, and it is something that we discussed specifically about how the house was sited and the advantages of the design that he undertook. It was never under, in my farthest imagination, that an addition in the form of an accessory building would ever have been allowed to be put in the backyard, which, if you look at the plot, thirty-five's backyard is my, is right by my house. It's right by my house and my bedroom. And I worked from home all summer, I mean, all winter, during this construction, under some significant duress. And I would like to address the screening and share my screen as to what has, what the screening actually looks like from my home, including the trees that were mentioned.
In all fairness.
Someone else got, someone else was allowed to share their screen. I'd like to share my screen very quickly so that everyone can see exactly the trees that are there today, the pre-existing trees that I begged the neighbor and contractor to leave, and the, and the small trees that someday may grow, but not to the fifty-five feet height. That is what is from my, my perspective, because I am at a lower elevation.
Okay.
So may I show that?
Yes, yes, you may.
Thank you. So just bear with me as I handle my technology. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, so. Okay, can everyone see this?
Yep, we see your screen.
So this is before, of course, the, this is before.
Could you, could you actually blow it up and make it bigger? That's just like a thumbnail.
Sorry, okay. Is that better?
I don't see a difference. Did you double-click it or?
It might have to be the way I'm viewing. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is that any bigger?
No, I don't see a difference.
Yeah, hold on. Is that bigger? No?
No.
Okay, let's see.
I mean, is the picture hidden behind your?
Yeah, hold on, hold on. Let me just bear with me one second. I need to stop sharing first. If you just bear with me, you know, this is my most valuable asset in my home, so five minutes of the board's time would be much appreciated.
I'm, I'm willing to give you that, that time, Scott.
So. So I pull it up here, right? Okay, and then I go to share. Is it any better now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So this is the view from, as you're standing outside of my garage. This is on the driveway. Obviously, you don't, no, this is the next one. I'll show you the bedroom. Actually, this is, and this is looking up from this, from my driveway, and then if you just sit down one minute. So what you don't see here is the, you know, the connection to the house. These pines were right, were on the property line, and they've been here for the last twenty years. So as you can see, the pines are pretty thin, and the shorter tree is what was just recently planted. The height of this building still needs to go up another five, eight, ten feet, because the eaves are not on this yet. And then I just want to show you one more picture. If you're with me, I need to stop sharing. Yeah, okay. And then I spend my life on Zoom. I should be better at this. I'm so sorry. And so this is actually from, from my bedroom window. So, you know, there's, it's quite close, and because the driveway is right on the property line with the retaining wall, and, and all of this is sitting on top of it. And, and to be honest with you, I don't know. You know, there was mention of a pool, you know, based on, based on the current placement of this building. I'm not really sure how a pool is going to fit, but again, I don't have an issue with a pool. I don't have an issue with an outdoor basketball court. This is a humongous, non-residential-looking piece of construction outside of my home that is impacting my quality of life and frankly, the, you know, value of my house. So that's addressing the screening. So there's going to need to be a lot of screening in twenty years. And, and I don't have twenty years. So with that, let me stop sharing the screen. I'll try to get back here. I'm sorry. Let's see. I'm trying to get back here. There we go, sorry. And I, you know, the other thing to mention is that, I think it was mentioned earlier that, and I can show you an aerial photo of this, but I cannot tell you the number of trees that were removed from this property right up, right up and potentially over the line of open space in the back of the property. The number of trees I am concerned has an impact on, you know, water shed, et cetera. And, you know, I've been assured that there's going to be drainage. I hope so. I mean, that's another, you know, concern, but the number of trees that have been removed raised, raised my mind, the question, you know, how that could be allowed alongside of the amount of earth that was excavated and, and was removed, truckloads and truckloads, and there are still piles of dirt around the property. So in addition to, you know, the technical concerns on how this could have been allowed, I, you know, I step back and I, you know, I question how this could be allowed. And it's just not reasonable. It's just not reasonable. It is just, you know, you know, when you see a duck, if you call it a duck, whatever that saying is, if someone wanted to put a pool in their backyard and they put a pool five times the size of an Olympic pool, one would question that, even for a pool. If someone put in a pool five times the size of a normal pool, it would be unreasonable and it would be questioned, and I would argue not allowed. This, I respect what one can do in their backyard. I wholeheartedly support that. I have, I raised my children in this neighborhood, in this house. And I respect doing what we can for the betterment of your children, but not at the cost of your neighbors and not at the cost of a precedent set in this town. That's never appropriate. And something in a much reasonable format could be addressed, could be put in and continue to meet the needs of one's children.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. All right, and Ginny, was, is there something you want to add? And I would just ask you, please, to be brief and to the point.
No, I think that my client and the other butter basically said it all. I mean, this is unreasonable. Its impact is significant. It cries out for further review from tree removal, from earth removal, you know, from the, the commercial nature, looming nature. And, you know, I would ask this board, you know, review this project and, and remove the building permit. It's just, it's just not a reasonable use.
Thank you. All right. Katie, was there anybody else in the waiting room? Or we're now nearly an hour and a half into this. I think we have to kind of move the ball forward here a bit.
Yep, I don't see any other hands.
Okay.
We're going to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor by roll call vote. Say aye. Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye for Williams as well. Okay, the public part of the meeting is closed now. That means whichever way the board decides here, we will, will not take further questions or comments from, from the public. I don't know. Further thoughts, Mike, on, on where to go here? I, again, we're, this is pretty uncharted territory to say issue, decision, desist.
Listen, I don't know how it took us an hour and a half. We've got a structure that the petitioner thinks is a fine, normal use. It's a basketball court. It's, you know, and it's, it's an accessory. The, you know, the, the abutter says, hey, listen, this far exceeds the scope of anything that's permitted use. This is outside. This shouldn't have been granted. How, you know, it's pretty straightforward to me as far as what the issues are. One hand, it's totally fine, basketball court, changing station, what have you. The other is, there's nothing like this in this town. The issue for the board is, are now we going to get into second guessing the building commissioner as to what they define as, you know, what their determination and interpretation of the building code is. And I can tell you, this is tough because I, you know, and to the butters, to the neighbor, listen, if I buy a piece of land and I want to clearcut it, and you lose the trees that, that were there before, it, it's my land. And if I want to build an accessory structure that's permitted by building code and I get a building permit, you know, yeah, it hasn't been done before, but guess what? It's being done now. So I'm a big property rights guy, but at the same time, and there's, I don't, there's no other structure like this. This isn't, this isn't an indoor basketball court. I've been to the Haciotus's place, and they've got some accessory buildings, and I'm not sure that it's this. I, I mean, this, this is, you know, if I was the next door neighbor, I'd be going bananas about this too. I mean, this isn't, you're not building an indoor basketball court. You're building, like, so is the visiting team coming to visit? Like, this, this is not, this is not a consistent use. That's, and again, like, I'm a property rights guy, but, you know. So you, you're building a house next to a house. Okay. You know, so what do we want to do as a board on this? Because this one, you know, this, this isn't someone who needs a deck installed. This is, are we going to step in and say the building commissioner shouldn't have issued this permit? So let's talk about it.
Okay. Paul?
I understand what you're saying, Mike, and agree with most of your thoughts. I'm not sure that I want to question what our building inspector granted. I think I don't, I think this is a little different where a lot of the conversation debate that just occurred is usually more prevalent if we're granting a variance, but we're not granting a variance here. So if there was a variance being requested, I think a lot of the, a lot of the concerns of the butters would be certainly more in play here. So I'm, I'm inclined to say that it's, although it's certainly different, it is, you know, to me, it is a, you know, a recreational use, you know, private recreational use, you know, for the family there. May they have made things easier on themselves if they didn't delineate things as such in their plans? You know, perhaps. I mean, do you need to be saying in your plans you have a visitor's locker room? And the visitor's locker room wasn't very big. This isn't, I mean, I forget what the dimensions were, but it was, it was eight by nine. I mean, that's.
But it's still a visitor's lock.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if it was, if it was, if it was forty by forty, you're like, wait a sec, what's going on here? I, I think it's silly to be calling something a visitor's locker room when it's a home plan. So I just think that's, again, I just don't think that was the, the best thing to do in a plan. Call it a, call it a changing room. I don't know, but, you know, by delineating it as a visitor's locker room, I think that just makes things more difficult. I do agree, if it's someone's property, they want to cut down every tree, they can cut down every tree. If you're not happy as an abutter with what you're seeing next door, then, you know, then, then you put up some trees to, you know, to, you know, to block things. And again, if we were granting a variance, I'd say let's put some restrictions on this to make sure that this is screened and that's screened. But we're not granting a variance here. We're just basically, I guess, the, the question at hand from an hour and a half ago was, is this, is this a use that is not, that is a, that is not, you know, that is not allowable, basically, and I'm, and that's what the appeal, I guess, is based on, and, and I'm thinking that it's, although it's certainly a lot different, but it is not, it is not uncommon for some to have. is not uncommon for someone to have an indoor basketball court, or an indoor pool, or an indoor tennis facility, whether it be here in Southborough or in another town. So that's, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Debbie?
Well, I think there's a difference between indoor facility and an accessory building, and I think that's what gives me a little bit of pause. I mean, we've talked about, you know, there are large homes in Southborough, and they have indoor basketball, swimming pools, tennis, or who knows? I did a, you know, quick search just to even look at the height of what would these look like if you were to put indoor basketball court in your house? And I'm not seeing anything near thirty-five feet. So I've heard some of the complaints have to do with the height also. You know, I've read, you know, make sure it's over sixteen feet, eighteen feet, twenty is good. I don't know about thirty-five feet, but I think that falls outside the definition of an accessory building. I think it's excessive. And I totally agree, you have a right to build on your property, but I think that there's a little bit of bending the regulations here, and it puts this board in a very difficult spot because the building inspector doesn't report to us, actually. I think the building commissioner reports to the selectmen, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
We have a process problem. I do think we should, we should, you know, maybe communicate our thoughts to the selectmen. I think, you know, what kind of town do we want Southborough to be? We want a town where people can build on their own lots? Yes, but we want people also to play by a set of rules. So this is not, in my opinion, an indoor basketball, you know, you know, inside, inside the house. This is an accessory. And I can tell you, when I was looking to put like a small shed, you know, I wanted to go twelve by ten or something, I had all kinds of troubles. So I think, I don't think it's a bad idea to check the building commissioner once in a while. I don't think it's our job to do that, but I think in this case, we've got something very, very unusual. I haven't heard that there's a situation, we haven't been able to find a, you know, sports complex like this that is really, falls under as an accessory. So I would be in favor of, I mean, I don't know what this board can do, but since the building commissioner reports to the selectmen, I don't agree with, you know, that, that this is an accessory building. I don't know what that, I don't know if that's meaningful, but I wonder if at least we want to write a letter to the selectmen to let us, to let, let them know our opinion on the matter. That's what I'm thinking.
Doris?
Oh, you're on mute, Doris.
I have to have one's presumed meeting.
So I'm a large proponent of property rights, of people being able to build on their property. So in my mind, there's two things. I think the building is out of scale with the house, but then I'm, I'm very stymied and struggle with so much out of scale. I've been to the property, and that bothers me quite a bit. But in the same hand, I don't quite see it as a improper use of it if it's attached to the building, but I don't know what to rely on for the scale. So anybody with a twenty thousand square foot home, or ten thousand square foot home, could put up a seven thousand private pool, indoor court. I will throw a few other things in there. So I don't really think we have code that we can rely on to, if it was a different kind of application, like, but I don't see it as an accessory building because it's attached, it's substantially attached. The use of it, I'm just a very strong property proponent that you use it for what you need to use it for. And I'm not as concerned as long as it's not a commercial business. It's not running a sports center, because someone could run a theater, we could just turn it into a theater, make it a mini movie theater. It's just out of scale with the property, so I'm struggling with that. It's, it's too large, in my mind. It's got steel beaming. I'm wondering if we're landing an aircraft carrier, but that's probably because of the open space you need to do a basketball court. So I'm inclined to question it. I just don't know if we have the authority to pull this permit.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's the, this is the problem I have. I mean, it, the, the building meets the zoning code. I understand what the applicant and the attorneys are saying about the scale and the size, and certainly asking for proper screening is appropriate. But I, I mean, it is, it clearly can't be commercial, there's no question about that. But I just, I don't, I don't see, I don't see that we have a way that we take an action here. We have an ability to, you know, provide relief from zoning code. We have the ability to provide variances and special permits, but, yeah, I have, I guess, I think it's definitely something that requires additional review because it is something pretty substantial, you know, in a neighborhood. But I, I don't, I don't know what action we can take this evening or on subsequent to say, this has to stop. Just, I don't see that we have that power unless somebody else has an opinion on the board that, that there would be an ability. I don't, I just don't see it. I've been looking through, through the code on that, and, you know, and the appeal says, you know, you have the power of the officer from whom the appeal is taken and may issue or direct the issuance of a permit. So saying we could, we could, we could issue a permit, but there's really no language about cease and desist, so I don't, Mike, do you?
Yeah. Thoughts on that? Well, you know, when this matter came up, I think it's one of our inherent jobs is to say, hey, listen, you know, worse, you know, the, the building commissioner has the authority to interpret the building code. They have the sole discretion to do that. And as a board, and this is, this is, this is the tight rope that I'm sitting here trying to decide this, because it meets the building code requirements. And so the building commissioner, you know, like, there's no reason for her to deny it. And so my challenge is, I think the, you know, the, the abutter that's appealing it, it's like, if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck. This is not an accessory use building. It's, it's not. This is a separate, you can call it anything you want. You can, you can connect it with the breezeway, you can make it this, you can make it that. It's not. This is substantially different than anything, I think, in this town. I can't think of anything that rivals this scale, this size, this capability. This, this is an indoor rec place on steroids. So, and again, that's, that's my personal opinion. I just hear what the petitioner says. The building commissioner has the authority to grant the permits. Do we want to check that authority and say, hey, listen, Lori, you shouldn't have given this permit? And I think we have the authority to do that. It's whether we want to start going down that road, whether we need to change the building code, or we need to amend our bylaw.
Well, the, I mean.
That's neither here nor there tonight, though. To me, it's what's before us. The petitioner has said, hey, listen, this building permit should not have been issued, and I get it, but at the same time, it was, and it fits the, the building code and our bylaws. So here we are.
So then, on the, the application for appeal says, you know, requesting an administrative review of project at thirty-five presidential. So I guess that's what we ultimately have to vote on.
That's it.
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I know, what, what's an administrative review mean? This goes back to the building commissioner, or before the board of selectmen, or the planning board?
That's where, so we, let's say we deny, just for argument's sake. We say, you know, Lori shouldn't have given this permit. Right? I don't think that, I think our oversight especially is, let's just say, and I'm not saying this, but like, oh, Lori went to high school with the petitioner, and it doesn't work, it doesn't meet the code, it's all nonsense, and she gives them the building permit anyways. Like, it's a fraudulent building. And I think we have the authority to say, hey, listen, this is butt kiss. We're not, we're not taking this building permit. Like, you can take it and toss it out, and I think that we have the authority to oversee that. The challenge here is there's, there's no allegation of that. It meets the bylaws, it meets the code. I, I think it's completely non-conforming, I think it's an inconsistent use, but that's my, that's my opinion. And that's where now I'm going to insert my opinion against, like, now, where does that lead us as a board? Again, I don't see another one of these coming along anytime soon, but at the same time, here we, you know, it's not permitted use, but man, you know, it's a duck too.
Okay. Do we have a proposal on a motion, on a ruling, or are we still trying to figure out what, what we have as options? I mean, to me, it, because the question is requesting an administrative review, I think that is that, that seems like the only, the only question.
David, the application has only asked for administrative review, but then as you dig deeper, it's also asking for us to pull the permit? Because that's not what the, I think we're just voting on administrative review of the permit.
Well, that's right, that's.
Right, we're not, you know, it keeps being said further along in Ginny and Gould's discussions, we don't have the authority to take the permit. Do we have the authority to? It sounds simple.
Yeah, I know.
It does sound real. Two hours later, it sounds pretty simple. It's administrative, it's not a removal of permit. You know, I'm just going to say, because they do have some evidence, some, you know, besides peace of mind and having a very large building, there's significant financial ramifications.
Absolutely.
This building is well underway, and, you know, may, maybe a design change. Otherwise, you gotta rip it up.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I don't know, I don't know if continuing it to, to, to further delve into options makes sense, but Mike seems to be saying, no, we don't want to do that.
No, I'm not saying to do it. I'm just saying ramifications of this one vote is that.
I think this is the administrative review right now, and I think what we want to do, from, you know, my understanding, is the petitioner saying, hey, listen, we want to pull this building permit, because it shouldn't have been issued, because the, the building commissioner didn't apply the code, the, the Southborough zoning court, because the use is inconsistent. That, that's the argument, is saying, hey, listen, just, just like, let's just say, just reverse it, David. Let's just say she had denied the building permit, and they sought us for review, we would overturn that denial and say, you can build your deck. It's, it's the same thing, but in reverse. So what, say, listen, this building permit shouldn't have been issued.
Right. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm trying to follow what, what's defined as what, what our, what our remit is, what, what are we allowed to do? But, you know, so I'd have to say, getting to the point, then, do we have a motion for a vote on administrative review or revocation of the permit?
Paul? Debbie?
I mean, as far as, as far as what we've, we've been talking, I'm just wondering, what exactly are we about to vote on? I mean, I don't.
Yeah. We need a motion.
I don't know, I mean, I, I, I would not make a motion to, to, whatever, to remove the, the permit that's been granted. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for us to do. I guess as far as reviewing this, I would say that, I'd make a vote to say that we just reviewed it for, you know, for two hours.
Right, absolutely.
And I think, I don't know who said what now, but maybe Debbie, you mentioned something that we can certainly express concern to, you know, to the town selectmen. I don't have a problem with us, you know, deciding to say that. So those, I guess, if those are the three things we've been discussing, that's, I guess that's, that's what I would say.
So, so is the, is the simple motion, a motion to revoke the permit?
Well, I mean, I guess that, that could be because.
We, we, I mean, we, we.
The applicant made an appeal of the permit, and so I guess the, the point of that appeal was to have us revoke the permit. And I would not, I would not vote in favor, or nor would I make a motion to, to revoke the permit, so I guess.
Yeah, I guess, you know, again, I apologize if Debbie was on the call. I'm looking for, we need an action to close it out or continue it, and I think the action to close it out is a motion to.
We can't continue because we already closed the public meeting.
I'm sorry, Paul?
We can't continue it now because we closed the public meeting.
True.
So that's, that's done. So we just now, as a board, need to vote on whether we want to, if we want to accept the applicant's appeal and revoke the permit, I believe.
Yeah, so I think what, so.
And I guess if we're gonna, I would make, I don't know, I would make a motion not to, not to accept the applicant's appeal to revoke the permit.
Yeah, you're making a motion to deny the applica, application revoked.
Does it, does it have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to deny the appeal from the applicant. It has a second. We need a vote. So by roll call, and again, this is to deny the appeal. So Paul? So. Again, voting, if you, if you vote aye, you are denying the appeal of the applicant, just to be clear.
Yeah, so I made a motion to deny the, the appeal of the applicant and not to revoke the permit.
Okay, all right. Paul Waltz, aye. Debbie?
Do we need to second that? I'm not sure.
Doris seconded it.
Doris.
Oh, sorry, Doris seconded it.
Okay, I, I agree.
You vote aye?
Aye.
Doris?
Sorry, David. I just want to make sure I'm voting correct. I'm gonna vote yes to.
A yes vote would deny the appeal and allow the permit as it, as is.
I'm a, I'm a yes.
Okay. Mike?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Williams, yes as well. The, the appeal for, on the, on the, on the, for the building permit has been, the appeal has been denied.
David, can I, can I suggest, as I did, that the board come together and, and put something that we can all agree on in writing to the selectmen? I am afraid that there may be a dangerous precedent being set, you know, and that maybe we can help shape that. Maybe we need different bylaws in town. You know, I'm not sure, maybe there, I'm not sure, but maybe the, the board can, can put something together for the selectmen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anyone ever intended a structure.
I would agree. Yeah, I think.
I agree too, Debbie. I think it would be a good idea to put that forth, and, and you do have to be. you do have to be careful when you, about setting a precedent, and that's why I'd be more concerned if we were granting a variance as opposed to, as opposed to not, or, you know, revoking something that the, that the commissioner already.
It's allowable.
Yeah, I, I feel really strong, I mean, you know, I think we're all on the fence on this, I just, you know, can sense it.
Right.
But I feel that it's, um, not within the board's purview. And that's the problem that I have, it's not that I agree that this is an acceptable accessory, I don't actually. But I also don't think that this is the proper channel. Um, and so it's a process thing for me, and maybe there's something to be worked out that if the selectmen were made aware. Um, maybe there's a, uh, another path for these sorts of things, maybe this, I don't know, should be in our purview, but right now, nobody really oversees the building commissioner. This is an issue that we have, so what are we really asking? Because as Mike says, it's, it's a sole decision, um, and the decision was made. And as, you know, it, it, this is not a proper use for an appeal.
Again, I don't want to be second guessing, you know, this is a really bright one. I mean, this is, th- this is, I mean, this is, this is a duck. But at the same time, it is what it is. And I don't want to start getting into neighbor disputes about, well, this is an accessory use and this isn't either.
Correct, I would agree.
You know? So I, 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 I think that South Borough, you know, that people go nuts when you want to change anything. But the result is, is that people are building to the max of what any considered reasonable.
So, so I, I, and, and that's, I, I think where I come in as well is, is if that, if the zoning code is not sufficient and it seems like here, they, they, they literally drove a truck through it, then the zoning code should be modified. And maybe there, there needs to be specific language about that, but we all know that people can propose zoning changes, but it has to go to town meeting.
That's it.
Meeting typically doesn't like changing the zoning code. So I, just if we could, I, I think we got to wrap it up.
Yeah, let's go.
On the agenda. Um, I, Katie, I think that, is the action, do we agree the action here is just, uh, you know, some sort of notice to either to the selectmen regarding, you know, our concerns, uh, regarding this particular project, uh, as it pertains to the zoning code, that might, it might require some review to see if it could be adjusted to address such situations. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
For me to write up in the decision, I mean.
Yeah, well.
We can work on it, I do, I mean, I agree, it's a zoning.
Yeah, I al- I almost think less, like, let's, let's just, I don't know, I don't know how to, cause it's just again, a little bit of a can of worms too.
Yeah, it is, and I, and I, and I agree, I don't, it's, it's hard to overrule the, the building commissioner, I just, you know, it's sort of like, can we just raise some concerns to say, this is, this is what came out of this meeting? And that way, you know, we can kind of wrap this up. Okay, I, I, you know, just, I, I, I think we need something not really, you know, too, more of a summary, Katie, I don't think we need to go into real detail, but just agree that will work on something that as just a message to the board of selectmen regarding concerns as a result of, of this hearing. All right.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with you guys on that.
Okay, reach out, Katie.
I will.
I'm gonna propose, do, do, do we need a three minute recess or five minutes recess before the next one?
Yes.
Okay, it's eight fifty eight, we'll resume again at nine oh three.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Petition is looking for a variance to allow an accessory building, basically violating the setback. Katie, can you read the notice?
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, July 21st, 2021 at 7:15 PM with regard to the petition of evangelist Motudinus, 10 Barn Lane, Southborough Mass. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow an accessory building containing a one-car garage and a pool cabana with a connecting breezeway within the 20-foot side setback in the Residence A Flexible Development District. Relief is requested under 174-13 to D4A4.
Thank you. And do, I think this is a little bit more, you know, within the normal thing that we do. Do we have somebody for the applicant to present?
Yes, we have the applicant and attorney.
Can let them in? Ah, there's a familiar face. You're on, you, Attorney Gould.
If you're ready for me, I will start.
Yep, we're ready for you.
Okay, I'd like to introduce you first of all to the property owner who's also on the screen, Angelo Matutus. He lives in Hungland Lane with his wife Ellie and his two children, a girl and a boy. And if this could have been a joint application with the adjoining property owner, it would have been, but your form is set up for a particular property to apply for the variance. If you look at the application, page 13, it is a picture of Ken Barn property looking from their outdoor pool towards the neighbor at 12 Barn Road. And what you will see is that Leo Moda, who, I'm sorry, Leo De Silva, who is, I believe, on this call as well, is the owner of 12 Barn Lane. Mr. Matutus and Mr. De Silva and their families are very good friends, so this is not an adversarial proceeding. They both came up with this idea together. And the, the facts are that Mr. Matutus has a pool and he planted some evergreen trees that I believe were arborvitae, and they have grown to a pretty good height, and he put a fence right behind the arborvitae, but it does a very poor job of screening either the view or noise from the pool to 12 Barn Lane and vice versa. As a result, everything that goes on in the pool and the patio at 10 Barn Lane is very visible from the windows on that side of the house of 12 Barn Lane. They both have young children, boys and girls, and they're, they're all friendly, and they came up with the idea of what can we do to better screen? Well, we can't put up a 15-foot-tall fence. So Mr. De Silva is in the construction business, and he and Mr. Matutus came up with the idea of maybe putting in a building that is not terribly deep, but will be between those evergreens that are two feet out, I'm sorry, the total is four feet out from the property line, to build a cabana that goes to the pool patio on that side of Mr. Matutus's property. They are both completely in agreement. The height of the building would be approximately 15 feet tall. On one side, it would be a single garage that would be architecturally similar to Mr. Matutus's house. Then there would be a connecting breezeway over the pool that, for architectural appearance, would be 12 feet high. And then on the back end of the pool would be a cabana area that would again be 15 feet high. And the neighbors believed that that would give privacy to both the 10 Barn Lane and the 12 Barn Lane property. I know that for a variance, you need facts that provide a hardship. So I can tell you that there is a plan that has been done, I believe it's been sent to you, that shows that there is a short but steep hill as you go from 10 Barn Lane up to 12 Barn Lane. And as a result, the building where 12 Barn Lane is located, because it also has a higher foundation than normal, it really looks down up above the tops of these trees, and something would have to be 15 feet high to block the view. Both parties have agreed on an architect's drawing of what they would like it to look like. And they are both, I believe, present. I know that Angelo is here. I don't know whether Leo could raise his hand so that Katie could either admit him, if the board would allow, to say that he is in complete approval with what I have just said. But that's it in a nutshell. Because of the topography differences between the two lots, so it does relate to soil shape or topography of the lots. Lots are not next to each other, but one is almost above the other like this. And as a result, the friendly neighbors came up with this idea themselves, and they asked me if I would present the application. But I had to explain, it's got to be by one person who's going to have the less than 10 or 20-feet sideline. So we asked in the application for two feet, but working with the architect to try to not make it quite so close, we can do a little more than two feet, but they would like not to go more than four feet.
Okay.
And that's the presentation.
Thank you very much, Attorney Gould. Okay, so before we get into other members of the public, I'd like to ask members of the board if they want to ask questions, and we'll start with Paul.
Sure. So I guess, obviously, I understand what's going on here. I guess if, first, if the permit is, is, was done as a two-foot setback, and now we're doing something different than what was, I mean, that was asked in the application, technically, the application should be amended on.
We're delighted with the two feet. We, we didn't want to have you establish too strong a precedent, so.
Well, that's what you're requesting.
Well, I would request the two feet.
So if that's, you know, so we're, if that's it, that's it. I mean, it's, if you're saying it's changed, then I think you should, you should ask to be to continue and change it then. Because we can't be approving something and then have you decide to build something different. That, 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 that doesn't, that doesn't work. As far as the crux of this is to provide privacy between two properties and screening for a pool, a shed in a garage isn't needed to do that. Some good, some good trees and some good screening could more than, more than suffice as, you know, for, for visual and for, and for sound, much more so than a, than a shed. So the fact that that's being given as the reason, you know, for the necessity here is, I don't think entirely accurate. And there's certainly then, there would be no hardship in putting, in putting in bigger, better trees to accomplish the same, accomplish the same thing. So that, now, the fact that there's a, you know, there's something that you're proposing, and the abutter is okay with it, I, I assume the applicant is the one building and paying for this, not the abutter. So the fact that it's, you'd say it's a joint application, I don't think has any merit here, because unless the, unless, unless they're doing something next door to pay for it, I, I doubt that's the, I doubt that's the case. So those, those are my, those are, those are my quick, those are my quick thoughts here on it. So what this really is to me is a cabana and another garage wanting to be built, where the abutter seems to be in favor of it, and it's not going to, you know, it's not going to have any objections to it.
Okay. Debbie?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the application needs to be updated. I was just wondering about, like, resale, you know? If this makes, you know, this building garage makes it a cabana, makes it less desirable for, for, if your both neighbors were to move away, would somebody think, like, why didn't they just put in some trees or something like that? But I think it's very nice that you have worked it out, to be honest with it. Had you looked at trees and any kind of screening? I mean, did you just decide that, you know, you wanted functionality instead with the, with the building?
May I jump in?
Yeah.
We're already, we've been here for three years. And I think I'm fortunate enough to have a great relationship with Leo. And not only is my neighbor, he was a part of the group that built my house. And I basically went up to him and asked him if I would, you know, if that would bother him. We do have the trees that are almost 14 feet, 15 feet high. And there is an issue with, you know, him overlooking and me overlooking. And also, you know, Leo is a little younger than me. And, you know, they, sometimes they entertain people. And, you know, it's okay for him to music, have music. And I would never say to him not to have music but entertain people. And those trees doesn't actually, you know, stop the music or even, you know, them, me looking at them and them looking at me. And not only I have trees on one side, I also put trees on the other side of, you know, of my house, and they're all 14, you know, I didn't take trees out, I actually put more trees in. I have trees all the way from around my yard, basically for privacy. And, you know, I tried the trees and it just, I think, we, you know, both of us need a little more privacy from each other. And I think that would, you know, help us a little, having that privacy and also some of the noise. To your question, we did try trees, they're like 14, 15 feet. We actually had two rows of trees going to that side and just didn't help.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I think we attested that, I think is present.
Okay.
Thank you.
Doris?
I don't have a lot of questions. I just want to mention, I have the same slight concern as Debbie, resale. When you have looked at the property, when you come up to the property, it'll architecturally look the same, the new garage, but it's very good, it's good, especially with that difference in leveling, it's going to really look tight, the two buildings and the properties will look tight, I think.
Well, there is an interest on Leo's side, there is an interest. His house is not really close to mine. There is some kind of like a driveway on the side, that is not a driveway, but it's his walkout basement. And I think it's almost 20 feet plus from his house, although maybe more.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, our relationship is so close that, you know, we almost use the same propane company that delivers, you know, the, the gas to both of our houses. As of reselling, I think I'm young enough, my kids are young enough, Leo's kids are young enough. And I hope to God, you know, we're here for quite a long time. I think nobody can say what can happen tomorrow. As, you know, I was patiently observing and listening to the previous presentation, and you just never know what happens. But I'm definitely not looking to put a, you know, an, you know, an entertainment complex or anything like that.
No, no, it sounds like it's scale.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I want to explain, it's a little cabana, and then Leo proposed, you know, we talked about it for the extra, the rest, that's going to provide more to what my attorney said, it's going to provide more privacy for some of the houses that has got windows overlooking my yard. And that's why we extended the building a little bit more.
Are you set, Doris?
Yeah, I'm set.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. I think, I think, I think that the questions are good regarding trees. As far as the, as far as selling, I, I, I think where we become concerned is, is it legal, right? Because if, if it's not legal, that's where you run into a problem selling a house. I think we've got to be careful talking about what impacts the resale value.
I agree with that.
Clearly, like, to me, I mean, it is, it's obviously, you know, a major violation of a setback. But I think a lot of times in cases like this, we really come down to what are the, what is the abutter thinking? The abutter is clearly in agreement with doing it. So I'd say, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I really don't have any, any, any further questions. So would, are there other people who would like to speak from the public, including Angelo's neighbor?
Yes, it looks like his neighbor has his hand up.
Okay. You can let him in?
Yeah, so I, I, we.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't do this well last. Could you just, your name and address, please?
Yeah, so it's Leo De Silva, 12 Barn Lane, Southborough Mass.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we've been talking about this for a while, so we, we in agreement. And I don't believe this will impact, you know, any sales or any, you know, for both of our houses, I don't believe this will be any impact on that side. I think this is, you know, I have a grill actually right that when I'm grilling, I'm always looking towards his house. So it's kind of like with this, it's going to be much better in the trees. That's there, it's going to keep there, so that's going to provide a little bit of, like, so we're not going to be just seeing the building. Actually, we're going to be seeing some trees and the building will be behind the trees. So we are all in agreement, and, you know, I think this would be good for both of us families.
Okay.
That's all. Problem.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who was looking to speak, Katie? I, I, I see Attorney Gould. Nobody else? Okay. Oh, Attorney Gould would like to add something.
Briefly, I just want to say, this is a beautiful neighborhood, obviously, and these are both very beautiful homes. I asked them the same questions about the trees, and they said that they spent a lot of money on these trees that are there. It doesn't block the noise, doesn't block the view. And no matter how big the trees are, because Leo's home is so much higher, aside from the fact that the ground itself is between seven and eight feet higher, when you look at the height of his windows, because his floors are high, I mean, each individual floor is high, no matter how tall the trees are, he's going to be looking down over it. So the idea of a garage up front, a breezeway in the middle, and a cabana towards the rear side of the pool would first provide a function, but it would also be much deeper. It would be approximately 12 feet deep, and it's clearly going to block more noise than just the trees, and it's going to block more view than just the trees. And they have reviewed the architectural, they've agreed on who the builder could be, and, and they're both very pleased with it. The reason I was suggesting, when I went out there, I said, do you really need to be two feet? What if you kept these trees between the building and the boundary line? And behind those trees is the fence? They both said, well, that would be okay, they would shrink the building a little bit. So if the decision could be worded that a variance is granted to be not less than two feet from the sideline, I think it could be granted. With both neighbors wanting the same purpose, and with there being a purpose that trees alone would not provide, I hope this board would consider it. And we do meet the grounds on a variance, because the whole problem is caused by the topography, with one lot being considerably higher and that house being considerably higher than the other. Thank you.
Okay, so I think, I think one, I don't know, just based on what I've been hearing from the other members of the board, I think that probably the critical thing is to just clarify. Are you, are you asking for, you know, the two-foot setback? Or are you going to, are you going to mend it to a four-foot setback?
I apologize to the board if I was muted there. Did you hear what I said most recently or not?
I, I think I missed what you might have said.
I apologize, so I'll, I'll make it really brief. The neighbors did get together, and I was there to meet with them. And I said, I do a lot of zoning work, and people are always, zoning boards are always concerned about variances. I said, I think you have the legal grounds here caused by the topography. Not only the ground being almost eight feet higher, but the house being considerably higher. And it was their idea that trees would not solve their purpose of visual and sound barrier to the same degree as a nice architecturally consistent building would, while at the same time leaving those trees behind the building that they're looking to.
Okay. So, so does, does that, I guess Paul's point is, the plan right now says it's a two-foot setback to the building. Is it instead going to be four?
I would ask that the decision be that they be allowed a variance to build, but no closer than two feet to the lot line.
You can go away with that, Paul, as we put, if we make that a condition?
I'm not sure, you know, I'd even defer to Mike on that, because if we start making decisions based on, you know, up to or this, but not including that, or something like, I don't know, I think it should be kept to what the, to what the application is. So if, if, you know, if in the time when they submitted the application and now something changed, that, you know, it should have been, I don't know, it's more of a technicality, but I mean, I don't know, I just, I'm just not super comfortable with kind of not, you know, maybe voting on something.
Not being further planned?
But I, you know, but if, if others, you know, so I'll defer to Mike's opinion on that, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with.
Attorney Robbins, give an opinion.
Please, prior to being online meetings and Zoom, we would scratch out the old application, have them handwrite it in and initial it and be done with it, so like.
Okay.
Okay. I, 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 I would, and I agree, I think we could do something as simple as saying, you know, setback from boundary line to pool and, I'm sorry, cabana and garage be, you know, not less than two feet. And, and that, to me, allows them to make it four feet, because then it's less of a variance than it is now. So that's my take on it.
That's, you know, like, so we're going to go and do this again in a month, because it's like, you know, what's.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that.
I'm okay then.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my, that's my two cents, like, 10 years ago, we would have scratched it out, had them initial it in person and be done with it, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we could handle that with a condition. Okay, do we, are we, are we ready to close the public hearing? Is there, Attorney Gould, is there anything other, anything more to add?
No, we thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close, seconded, all in favor by roll call, say aye, Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike? And Williams, aye. Okay, the public meeting is closed now. Do we need any further discussion on it? It does seem to be pretty clear, maybe it's just a matter of how we word a condition to attach here. But if there is no more discussion, then, you know, we could, we could certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the variance as, as requested, with some, I guess, language added that it's up to, you know, no, no closer than two feet or however.
Okay. I think we, I think we can word that. Do we have a second?
I think we should just change it to, you know, we make a motion to, and this, this is if we want to approve it, but make a motion to approve the petition with their requested. Make a motion to approve the variance with up to a two-foot setback.
Okay.
That, that's better stated.
Do we have a second?
I don't want it as a condition, I want to write in the decision right there.
And Paul, can you just withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll, and I'll second, and I'll second Mike's motion.
I, I wondered about that. Procedurally, I think we had, thank you, Katie. Somebody's got to keep me out of being here. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the variance with the setback not to be closer than two feet, with a second. All in favor by roll call, votes say aye, Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams is aye. The variance is granted, thank you very much. All right. Moving rapidly along here. And rapid. So the next item we have on the agenda is 15 Common Street Pilgrim Congregational Church. Katie, when you're ready to read that.
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, July 21st, 2021 at 7:30 PM with regard to the petition of Pilgrim Congregational Church, 15 Common Street, Southborough Mass. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow a replacement sign with ground illumination in a size that exceeds the allowable square footage in the Residence A District. Relief is requested under 174-11115E1C and 174-1123.
Okay. And do we have somebody from the applicant to present?
We have Bill Harrington.
Okay. You can let him in.
There we go. We would like, the Pilgrim Church, a couple of years ago, when the project on, on the street in front of us got going, we had a small sign that identified our church, and we took that down. It, it needed to be taken down. And so now we're proposing to put up a new sign, a much more appropriate sign, a sign that really is in keeping with the architecture of the church and so forth. It's a, can we show the picture, Katie, of the sign? Would that be helpful? It's in your packet, you, have you, have you seen the packet? Anyway, it's a four-by-six sign, supported by granite posts setting out in front of the church. It will be illuminated by a, a light on the ground. And the light is an LED light, it complies with the lighting, illumination bylaws of the town. The, the sign is approximately like the one at St. Mark's Church, right down one of our abuddhas, almost, on the other side of the town hall. So there is a precedent for a sign of this nature, and we would just like a variance to put this sign in place.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Paul, questions?
Yeah, yeah, and I know when, looking at this, do, do we have some, like, rules about the hours that you're allowed to have a sign illuminated?
Yes, there, there are rules, and the rules state that it has to be shut off by 10 o'clock in the evening. Yes, there, there are rules and the rules state that it has to be shut off by 10 o'clock in the evening. Now, we, we, we're, unfortunately, we have lights that light the steeple of our church, huge lights that light the steeple. They are on a timer that shuts them off at 10 o'clock at night. This sign illumination will be tied into that same timer, so that the sign, the lighting for the sign will also go off at 10 PM.
Okay, that's good. That's my only question.
Okay, Debbie?
No, my questions were answered. I appreciate that it's in compliance with the new lighting bylaw and it's a beautiful sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doris?
I don't have any questions and just I understand that the church needs to have it taken down with construction, so I don't have any questions other than you need to get your sign back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, sorry, um, I have no questions for the applicant at this time.
Thank you. If I could just briefly, so that, that was a construction on the street that caused the sign to come down or it just had to come down anyway?
It, it, it needed to be come down and that was, that was by the reason that gave, was the impetus for for doing what we're doing now, just to get that sign down and replace it with something much, much more appropriate and a, and a much nicer looking sign.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, what is the, you know, how much it exceeds the, the size, the square footage, is it?
I, I, I'm not clear on just what the specification is. I, I think I read it was 20 square feet, but I'm not sure what it was, but anyway, this is roughly four by six, so it's 24, 24 square feet roughly.
Okay. And I mean, knowing where you're located, your immediate abutters are the Town of Southborough and the St. Mark's Church, correct?
And, and some, and some cemeteries.
Yes, so I, I mean, I, I'm assuming nobody's come forward to complain about it.
Evidently not. We sent out the certified letters and they were all cut back and so.
And I just wanted to, I sort of to back up what Debbie said, it, it's good to hear that the lighting is in compliance with what they're asking for. I'm, I'm also gonna note that, that this does require the planning board to review, which they did. All the issues they needed, that, all the questions they had to answer were three to zero votes. There were two abstaining in each case, I believe that's because those two planning board members who abstained are actually members of the church, so.
That's correct, yes, that's correct.
So I, it, it seems like all the ducks are in a row here. All right, so Katie, go ahead, Doris.
The, the sign in the picture, it's just gonna be black and white?
Basically, black, basically like black and white, the letters for the Pilgrim Congregational Church letters will be engraved, they will be black and then they will have a gold outline around the letters, so it'll be, be a pretty classy looking sign. The only, the only color is down in the corner, there's a logo for the United Church of Christ and that's the United Church of Christ logo and it has a rainbow in it. You can see it in the, in the picture.
I see, okay.
Quite tasteful, actually.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Harrington? And Katie, do we have anybody else from the public who wants to speak?
There are no hands up.
Okay. If we don't have anything else to discuss or questions from Mr. Harrington, we could certainly entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing and a second, all in favor by roll call, vote say aye, Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, we've closed the public hearing. Doesn't seem like we really have need for more discussion here, unless somebody feels strongly, but otherwise I would entertain a motion to approve the application. Sorry, what is it, a variance? It's a variance.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the variance as applied for.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor by roll call, vote, say aye, Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. The, the variance application is approved, congratulations and thank you. All right, very good, thank you.
Now we're moving right along.
Now we're moving along, yes. All right, well done, folks. All right, next on the agenda, Katie, is the, the garage application, correct, at 37 Lindbrook?
Yep.
Construction of a two-bay, one-and-a-half-story garage with an existing three-bay garage, resident said. So, sorry, go ahead and you can, you can read the, the notice.
Okay. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, July 21st, 2021 at 7:45 PM with regard to the position of Vinit in Aparna Margawala, 37 Lindbrook, Lindbrook Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a variance to allow construction of a two-bay, one-and-a-half-story garage with an existing three-bay garage present in the Residence, Residence Aid District. Relief is requested under 174 82B12.
All right, very good, and do we have somebody present to present on behalf of the applicant?
Yep, we have Peter Bemis here.
Good evening, members of the board, thank you. So I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Nagawalas at 37 Lindbrook Road. If I'm allowed to share my screen, I could show you the plan that was part of your packets, otherwise I can describe it if you'd prefer.
I think sharing the screen is, is acceptable, sure.
Good, okay. And is that visible to everyone?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Again, Peter Bemis, engineer and design consultant, so Lindbrook Road is to the south. We've got abutters to our left and right, this is 37 in the middle and, and 35 is, is to the, to the east. And the existing driveway is located here, the existing three-car garage is located here. And the proposal is to put a one-and-a-half-story, two-car garage in this position on the lot as an accessory structure. The dimensions of the building are shown to the right here in detail and the elevation as to what they plan to construct is shown here in this view. I can bring those in a little bit more too, so you can see them better.
I was gonna ask if you could zoom a bit.
So you can see that it's a 24-by-26 garage, basically two doors and, and windows, there'll be a double door to the rear. And I have a view of that also that might be helpful for you to see, so from the street currently, you would see these masonry walls on either side of the driveway, at the top of the driveway there, that's a basketball, a hoop court that's located just behind the driveway here, there's a corner of it that you can see in this picture. And that's shown here, to the left, existing basketball court, so this would be just located in front of that. There are three existing bays, so therefore that is what allowed by right in zoning and for any additional bays, we would need to have a special permit granted from the board. So we are hopeful that the board would see that this is a proper and appropriate use at 37 Lindbrook. If you have any answer any questions, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bemis. All right. I, maybe it's okay to leave it up there. Paul, do you have any questions?
I actually have no questions.
Okay, Debbie?
Can you guys still hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, I've lost the picture.
Oh, do you want it back? I apologize, I thought you might want to see each other.
Yeah, it may be helpful, actually.
Would you rather, okay, all right, I'll go back to sharing, I'm so sorry, I got the impression that you'd want to see each other when you don't.
No, that's okay, I, I didn't make it very clear.
Okay.
I just want to ask about, so this would be five, you know, a total of five bays, you know, garage, with the additional two bays. Are there other examples in the neighborhood of, of that? I mean, this is a tricky one because we've had this come to the board before and there, there must be a reason that our bylaw limits, you know, the number of bays in the garage to three. And so I just want to ask a little bit about that, if there's others in the neighborhood, there's five, five bays. I know this is a separate, a separate building, but maybe if you can just talk about what, how this fits in with the neighborhood.
Sure, so, so we, we deliberately made this a one-and-a-half-story structure, so it was, is more like a large shed than it, than it is like a separate garage building. I know you just debated this issue earlier this evening about size and scale. So that was very intentional when I spoke with them about the proposal, so that it did not seem overbearing in any way. I do know that there are number of, of more than three-car garages in town and I would believe that one of the properties, I think someone had referenced earlier, was, was up the street on Lover's Lane, without being specific about the property, there, there is a property there that would have more than, than three garages, that's not too far away. And I, you know, I, I am familiar with others in town, but I, I would say that, again, this, this is a one-and-a-half-story structure, there is no space that's allowed to be used above the, the bay, it's just a roof line. And if someone was to propose something of larger scale, then I'd say it probably might be inappropriate and certainly wouldn't, wouldn't fit in, but in this case, it is really just a larger shed for all intent and purpose. So I hope that answers the question you're asking of me, thank you.
Yeah, it, it does, thanks very much, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Doris?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions on this.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay. So, so I guess my comments are, like, I, I, we've been on review boards before where this has been approved. Really, Mr. Bemis is correct that there are a number of these in town that exceed, you know, the three-bay minimum and a lot of times it comes down to, but how do the neighbors feel about it? It, it, so, but I do, I guess I have two questions. One is, you're, there's no, there's no setback violation, is that correct?
That, that, that's correct, this is a necessary structure, so it's not, it's not a separate principal structure.
Right, okay. The, the, the other is, if we, if you really, I think if you get sort of technical, the question is, what is the hardship that, that would require the need for a separate two-bay garage?
This, this isn't a variance petition, it's a special permit.
True.
And, and so.
It just needs to be not more detrimental.
Right, all right, all right.
And I, and I did, in my petition, I did describe that in my cover letter, I probably should have added here, but I, I got, my abutters aren't in opposition of my proposal and.
Okay. So the abutters, the abutters have no objection?
We notified everyone and they, all the cards, without, one, one card did not come back, but everyone was notified. And that was not.
And, and I mean, was it, for the, the direct abuter closest to the garage, did they, have they had discussions on it, like?
With the neighbors, yes, each other, they, they communicated with each other.
Okay, and I, I thank my board members for keeping me straight as well, so, so good work there. No, I, I have no other questions. So you could, it's probably, the, you can probably stop sharing at this point.
Okay, very good.
All right, Katie, is there anybody else who's looking to, with a, a hand raise who wants to speak?
I don't see any other hand raises.
Okay, I don't, does, do any board members have any further questions for Mr. Bemis? Looks like the answer is no, in that case, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to close with a second, all in favor by roll call, vote, respond with aye, Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye as well, so the, the public hearing is now closed. Based on the amount of discussion we just had in the public hearing, I would say we probably don't need more, we just need a motion on the special permit application as written.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the petitioner's motion as drafted.
A second? Okay, we have a motion to approve the special permit form as drafted with a second, all in favor by roll call, vote, respond aye. Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye as well. That's five-zero, the, the permit is approved, thank you, Mr. Bemis. Okay. So. Back to the agenda. Those are all the applications, we do have, how do I do that? We do have one order of business to take care of when it comes to, Katie, what's the address, 200 Turnpike, is it? We, we put in a condition that they do a traffic study. They did the traffic study, it actually came back as, there's gonna be less traffic as a result of, of, of this business change from what's there today, so. I did that, and, and refresh my memory, Katie, did everybody get that sent to them for their review?
Yes.
I mean, it looks like there's a lot there, but if you read it, you can really, it really covers it in a couple pages, so. As a board, do we have any concerns based on what we just received as the traffic study? Because I think, I think what we need to do here is, that's a condition, we need to close that, we have the, the, the traffic study. I think we just need to agree that we're, we accept the traffic study, now we can, you know, close that so that they can go forward.
I just know that earlier there had been a request for us to post or I'd like to be heard as part of the call, so from Sandy regarding the traffic survey, so I, I remember that was put on like right when the meeting started and so I just.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, at, at this stage, is there anybody waiting or raising a hand now, Katie?
Yes, that Sandy is raising her hand.
Okay. We can, I think we can let her in.
I'm working on it, sorry, folks. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Sandra Colligan, I'm the direct abuter to this building, I'm a little late to the party and at 206 Turnpike Road, I did go through the traffic study, I had requested a copy of it from Mr. Crandall and did not receive it, I was able to get it through the town. So I just need to go over it a bit because it doesn't seem to really, the data doesn't seem to support what the summary of the traffic study says. So I need some better understanding of it.
So on page four. Page four says that there's nine hundred, uh, daily volume of cars is nine hundred. Then on page nine and table six, it states that there's an actual negative impact of the traffic. However, in the summary below it, it says the increase of traffic is one vehicle every seven minutes along Middle Road. Um, page four, the nine hundred vehicles per day is Middle Road. So if you take the one vehicle every seven minutes, there's sixty minutes in an hour, twenty-four hours in a day, there's fourteen hundred and forty minutes per day. Um, that would be an additional two hundred and five vehicle visits. You divide that into nine hundred and it's actually a twenty-two percent increase. So I'm just having a hard time understanding the traffic study. Um, that's just my math. If someone else could explain it to me better, that would be great. My biggest concern is not Middle Road. My biggest concern is my driveway.
Good, I'm sorry, could you just repeat where that math came from? Just, I, I, I did take a look at it, but I'm going to admit I didn't go through it with the detail that you did.
Sure. Um, if you look at page four of the traffic study in table one, it says that this is a baseline traffic volume summary of Middle Road. And it says weekday morning peak and weekday evening peak are the same. The first row is, um, nine hundred daily volume per day.
Yep.
So nine hundred cars per day, and it says it in the summary below as well. Middle Road carries approximately nine hundred vehicles per day.
Okay.
So then when you go over to page nine, table six, intersection total entry volume, um, they show that, that there's an actual, which I heard you earlier saying, it appears that there's a negative impact on the, on the traffic, that there's basically no impact. But just below it, there's a summary of table six that says the project will result in an increase in traffic of one vehicle every seven minutes. Um, you know, if you just do the simple math, um, that equals, unless, I mean, this is just my math, but that's where I did. There's sixty minutes in an hour, twenty-four hours in a day. So there's fourteen hundred and forty minutes per day. It looks, it appears to me that they're averaging. So that would be an extra two hundred and five, uh, vehicle travels on Middle Road. And you simply divide two oh five by nine hundred and that's such a twenty-two percent increase.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Chairman, there, I think, um, someone who actually conducted the study is raising their hand. He might be able to explain it a little better.
Okay, yeah, why don't we bring him in? We can't hear you very well. It's, it's very, very soft.
If you can hear me at all, I can share the screen. I can show the calculations for, um, the difference if that helps.
I, I think that will help. I think, I think what Ms. Coligan wants to understand is.
So what, what the, what the difference is, is one, one table is the baseline existing where the table number in page nine compares it to a no build conditions with the infill and as of right use of that full office building at the twelve, um, thousand square feet. And that'll show up in my slides. So. Just so the board is aware, this is out, this is the site here, the shared driveway, um, out to Middle Road is one of the study locations. And then we, we looked at the Route Nine intersection as well. I'll kind of skip over just to get to, um, her question. The existing office use is this first column here. This is going to produce approximately fourteen peak hour trips, the one hour peak in the morning and the one hour in the afternoon, about fourteen trips. And over the course of a day, a hundred and sixteen trips. They want to take out six thousand square feet of office in that one building, have six thousand square feet of office. They're going to convert the other six thousand square feet to a warehouse use and then add a second building for a total of thirteen thousand. So if you add the office, the warehouse for the proposed use, you get approximately nine peak hour trips in the morning, nine in the afternoon, eighty over the course of a day. So you get a reduction of approximately five peak hour trips and thirty-six trips over the course of the day. And that table she was referring to here, this is a no build condition. So that, that assumes the, the re-full occupancy of that office use are these volumes here. And then the project impact is actually a reduction at the Route Nine, Middle Road intersection, as well as that the site driveway for a decrease in traffic, which satisfies your ten percent, uh, requirement.
I'm sorry, could you, could you just go back to that real quick? Could you say again what the, what the first one, the first line represents then? The no build?
This first line here is Middle Road at Route Nine for that intersection. This is the total entering volume under a condition where we infill that office to be fully occupied.
Oh, okay, 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 great, great.
And then the other one is the site driveway. So you've got a condition where if you left it as an office and it was fully used versus if that was vacated with this proposed, uh, use by the proponent, um, mostly for their sm- snow removal division.
Right, okay.
So you end up with a reduction in trips at the driveway on Middle. So you get a reduction on Middle Road as well as a reduction at the Route Nine intersection. Would, it'll be marginal. So I could, I could share, I can describe, uh, if you can see this screen here and I can zoom in on, this is what she was talking about here. So the increase in traffic will be approximately one vehicle every seven minutes on Middle Road compared to baseline conditions. So that's if, if nothing happened today. So what we did is we actually infilled the office building to its full use. And if you do that, it shows a reduction in traffic compared to that.
Okay.
The, the wording wasn't the best, but it, it is a reduction compared to the existing use.
Ms., Ms. Coligan, does that answer the, the immediate concern? Uh, you're on mute, I'm sorry.
It answers it, but I think it's disingenuous. I don't think it's, um, I don't think this is done appropriately. Um, taking a building and filling it up with as many people as you can so you can show negative impact is, um, absurd. You know, if you go to Mr. Crandall's, um, you know, um, business plan, he plans to double in, um, and have thirty-two vehicles. He doesn't say what size some of the vehicles are. And my, my concern is not necessarily Middle Road. It's my shared driveway. And the shared driveway was not part of this impact, um, traffic study. And I just would ask the board to please, um, take this back and add the shared driveway. Um, and I, I've been following along tonight, so I could share my screen if I could figure it out. I have pictures of our shared driveway. Um, the shared driveway is at some points only fourteen feet wide. So, you know, I have a real concern and we have blind, um, it's a long driveway, about three hundred feet. Um, we have some blind corners. I'm, I'm, I just have concern with safety and making sure that I know what size trucks they are and things of that nature. I don't want to interfere with Mr. Crandall, um, doing whatever he wants to do with his property. Um, like I said, I'm late to the party, but I don't think that this traffic study is, um, I mean, I could go through quite a few points where I, I, I don't think it's, um, I don't think that the use in the traffic study is appropriate to what Mr. Crandall is using it for either. Um. Do bear with me, I have some notes.
Well, she's looking at that through the chair. We did, um, do a study of her driveway at, um, Middle Road. That was included in the study.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, so just in, 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 in terms of a procedural matter, we, we, we already approved it with one condition, which is the traffic study, which they provided. So.
They provided a traffic, sorry.
Right, but, but understand that this still is, needs to continue on to the planning board. Like, this is, this is not the final stop.
I, I understand.
I, 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 I mean, I, I, I understand you, you're, you're certainly entitled to a voice. I would say some of the concerns, I, I believe, would have been more appropriate at the, the, the hearing that we had initially.
I agree. I agree. I, I didn't get my mail on that. That's, that's on my kids. I'm not going to argue that at all. I would just say that the traffic study in this, they used the data from the state for a warehouse. Um, it, it's not for a snow plowing landscaping business. So I don't think that the correct data was utilized in performing this traffic study. So I just think that, um, the correct data needs to be utilized for the traffic study. We need to know, you know, the real use of this building is for a snow plowing landscaping business. He's going to have large trucks. He's going to have, um, salt re-brought in and, uh, brought out. And, um, we need to call it what it is. It's not a warehouse. It is a, um, it is a construction company. And, um, the traffic study needs to reflect that, in my opinion, not a warehouse.
Okay. Um. Mr. DeMay, is, that, is there a standard for what, what she's looking for?
Based on the zoning and what, and what was approved, um, we use industry standards from across the United States and Canada, um, for standard rates for office building, trip rates, as well as, uh, warehousing for the square footage applied. We also use empirical data, which is, um, included in the attachments of our traffic study, which does indicate the size and types of vehicles, um, intended to be used by the applicant, uh, as well as the number of employees, approximately eleven, um, maximum employees at one time on the site, um, outside of an emergency situation for snow removal that would occur mostly when the roads are closed or there's not a lot of traffic on the roads. They'd be removing snow. So most of the year, they're, that, if you look in the back of our study, they were projecting to have about four employees there during the summer and the spring. Um, they said they're not intending to operate a full landscaping business out of here. They're going to continue to do that process out of their other facility. Um, and they would have approximately eleven employees, I believe, um, in the late spring over the winter, uh, periods. And that was, that was included based on correspondence received from the applicant. Uh, so that did, um, that did collaborate pretty well with the industry standard, uh, rates that we got, about nine peak hour trips. I mean, there, there's somebody coming and going, most of their employees over that, that one hour.
So, so are you saying that, 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 that traffic information that you're using is, is, is based on some empirical data, like observations at a similar con- similar yard? I think that's probably what Ms. Coligan's looking for. I think she, she's concerned it's not, not a real.
We did not base it on empirical data. We based it on industry standard data, but then, uh, reviewed the empirical data by the client to see if the data was appropriate.
And was the data used for the employees only or for the, um, plowing and landscaping vehicles that are traveling in and out on a daily basis?
That should account for both.
It should or it does.
The lane you said we did for warehouse and office would have both employees as well as delivery type, um, trips built in.
Right, but warehouse, office versus landscape, snow plowing would have, definitely have different traffic. And that's my point, is that I don't think this traffic study is, is, uses the appropriate data. And I just think that it needs to be done with appropriate data. I have, I have a, I have a business down here. I have a shared driveway and this, this traffic goes directly through my parking lot. We have, at some points, our road is fourteen feet wide. So I, I feel very strongly that you've asked for a traffic study. It needs to be appropriate data, and I don't believe that this is appropriate data.
Based on the use and the zoning, the, um, existing use versus proposed is appropriate.
He's requesting to have a snow plowing landscaping business. It's a special permit.
Well, but I mean, technically, we're, we're strictly in a traffic study here. I would ask if you have any other, any other reference that would, you know, sort of challenge that. It, it sounds to me like you're saying a warehouse isn't appropriate, but I think you would need, I think you would need a reference that would.
Well, a warehouse. It's not a warehouse. It's a, it's a.
Well, but, but if, if I could.
Okay.
If, this is for the intent, for the purposes of a traffic study. You're right, it's not a warehouse. But I think the question is, does a warehouse use approximate the traffic that you'd have for a contractor yard? And I don't know if there's a standard that would exist for a contract yard for, for snow removal, uh, in this case. Do, do you know if that exists, Mr. DeMay?
There, there's not that exist use, uh, no. Closest, you could look up like a contractor, um, type of thing. For the amount of employees that they're looking at, the site, um, the data is appropriate. I mean, they're looking at eleven employees, so you, you can't possibly, um, it is whatever, you have eleven.
The employees that actually work there are office employees. You're not adding the plowers and the landscapers.
Those, those plowers and landscapers would occur on periods where the, all the other businesses in the area either closed or they're like overnight snow plowing.
No, I understand, but the data needs to be added to the study.
That's not an average condition throughout the year, so.
That's their whole business model.
Right, but, but so I, I think, I think the, the question is, is it, is the study based on legitimate standards? I mean, that's as, I, I, I believe that's as much as we can ask for here. Is it based on, on a legitimate existing standard?
It is. We, we, I think counts and then adjusted them for pandemic adjustments as well as, uh, seasonal variations.
Okay.
Took that all into account as well.
Okay, does anybody else from the board have any, any comments on that? I just, I, I feel like we're, we're relying on, uh, you know, the professional stamp here for performing a traffic study. I'm not expecting it to be misleading if it's based on accepted standards. Yeah, I don't. I, I think you would, I, I just, I feel like you would need like a professional opinion that says that that's the wrong way to do that or, or some sort of reference. I, I have a hard time saying, you know, that this is based on an incorrect standard. This is what I'm saying.
I understand. I mean, this is my concerns.
Okay.
And I, I, I feel like this is the place to, um, voice them and I will carry them on to the planning board.
Right.
Um, I have safety concerns.
Okay, and I, I, that's kind of where I'm going with this. I mean, we, 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 we have the ability to, to, to share your concerns with the planning board regarding the traffic study. I do think, like procedurally, you know, we've, we've approved it. We have, uh, the traffic study. I understand you have concerns about it. Um, we're not professional engineers to, to, to pick that apart. It's actually a little bit more appropriate for the planning board and they may have resources they could consult with as well. Uh, unless I'm hearing something different from anybody on the board, that's, that's kind of the way I feel about it.
I'm not a professional. It's above my pay grade. It's just when I read it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't seem to apply to what the, um, owner really is going to be doing with the building.
And, and, and I, you know, I don't want to be dismissive of your concerns. I, I, I think they, they should be addressed. I, I just kind of feel like maybe we're not the right forum to do that in this case.
Interesting.
And potentially to answer your question through the board, it, I don't know if the attorney for the applicant is on. Um, it sounded like the applicant themselves were, had a conflict tonight. Their attorney may be able to address your, um, use concerns at least, but that's out of my, um, purview as well.
You're, I mean, what you're, you're specifically just addressing traffic studies, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're, I mean, I'm assuming you are, are you a, you're a professional.
You're within the state of Mass, correct?
Devil engineer, yeah, okay, all right. So, yeah, I, I mean, my take on it, and again, anybody from the board could feel free to jump in, is that I, I think we, you accept the traffic study and we just maybe, you know, send a message to the planning board saying there are concerns regarding the data used for the traffic study. And that, you know, Ms. Coligan clearly would have the ability to attend the, the planning board, uh, when they hear it.
Thank you. If, if you could also pass the data and, and the fact that, uh, the shared driveway was not, it was not part of it. Um, it was only Middle Road and Route Nine, the traffic and the, and the, um, impact on two oh six Turnpike Road, which is my building. And this goes through my parking lot. It was not addressed.
Uh, we, we did study your driveway for the record.
Okay.
We did a traffic count of, uh, AMPM. We did a traffic count of uh AMPM of the um seven nine four to six at the driveway intersection with middle road. And we also provided um the auto turn for various types of potential vehicles in the attachments to the study as well.
Any, any comments from anybody on the board, or?
Hi Sandy, um, if you have access to, and Katie, correct me, you should be able to see the, you know, be very informative about some of your questions, the original uh application meeting, it's up online, right Katie? Yeah, so you can see, uh, there was so much presented in that evening, and, and I do recall some, quite a bit of discussion about the turn, and the narrowness of the turn at your location.
Okay, I will have to, I'll have to review that, I, I wasn't at the meeting, and I had had many discussions with um the owner. Um, it was when I read the um, it was when I read the report from the ZBA, and I saw that he had um requested for an additional seven thousand square foot building um large salt pit, that it became clear to me that this was a much larger um project than what um I was led to believe. And um I really didn't start paying attention until I read that, so I'm late to the party. And I'm gonna follow up accordingly.
But you could catch up very quickly, there's a, it's pretty, it's pretty thorough meeting, if my recollection is, is.
It, it was, that, that.
It was, it was one of the, very well presented.
Yeah, no, this is on me, I'm late to the party, but I'll catch up.
Katie, yeah?
Uh, we do have a hand up, if you want to entertain Michael Norris.
Um, okay. All right, Michael, you, you look like you're on muted, even if we can't see you.
Yeah, I am, uh, Michael Norris, I represent the applicant uh in this matter. And I know he's had a number of discussions with Sandy before he even bought this property, explained to her what was going on, what was gonna be in there, uh, he's gone through tremendous uh expense and work in putting this project together. He owns a company up in uh Danvers that does snow plowing all over the state. And he bought this property in order to uh have a, another facility that's closer to some of the areas that he uh handles in um this part of the state. He had, a, a lot of the, the traffic uh that I believe the study does is with the employees going in and out of there, which is uh Dan has indicated is gonna be less than what was there before. The trucks that are there, uh, the only time they go in there and out of there would be the load up with salt. Uh, if they're gonna do that, if the salt's not on the site, the trucks are stored during the winter off-site at the facilities. Uh, and I think all, and it's, and they're brought back here for some repairs and other things that they do with them uh off-season, and I think at the meeting, he went into a great detail as to what they do with this and how they use, and my understanding is that the perfect of the tra- the purpose of the traffic study is for the traffic impact on the roads and not on the private driveway.
And, that is correct.
And I think that the, the study uh addresses that perfectly, and that Dan has gone into great detail as to the changes in it, and then it shows that it's gonna be a negative impact uh on the, on the highways and the roadway surrounding the property. Thank you.
Well, okay, thank you. All right, um. But I think that the, the issue here is, are we, are we, are we accepting the condition of the traffic study to uh, that we, that we requested, that's really the question before the board. Um, and we're really, we're kind of not in public hearing, private hearing space, but um I suppose we might want to do that if we want to just vote on approving or not, right, we, we would need to close the, the public part of this. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't, does anybody from the board have any questions at all? Again, this is limited just to the traffic study as a condition of, of something we already approved. All right, well, then, I, I, I think procedurally, I think we should still I'm not ask for a motion to close the public part of this hearing, even though it's not a hearing?
I'll make a motion to close this um public hearing, that's not a public hearing.
Maybe the discussion.
The discussion, thank you.
I'll make a, I'll second the motion to.
Okay. Uh, all in favor by roll call vote, aye. Uh, Paul? Debbie?
Aye.
Dor- Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. I, I really think it's as simple as up and down, um, do we accept the, the condition of the traffic study? Do we accept the traffic study to close the condition we had on the, on the hearing for two hundred Turnpike Road? Um, make a motion, right, I move that we accept the traffic study as a condition to close the application for two hundred Turnpike Road.
Second.
Second, all right. All right, all in favor by roll call vote, say aye, Paul? Debbie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, that closes that, we accept the condition, I will, I will draft a message for the planning board as well. All right, so uh there's minutes to approve, Katie, the only thing I noticed is you were referring to a July twenty-second hearing, which you meant was gonna be July twenty-one. Other than that, I saw no, no issues. Did anybody else have any problems with the, with the minutes from the previous meeting?
That they were good.
Okay. I know it's late. Do, all right. Do we then, right, I move that we accept the meeting minutes as written with the uh exception of the reference to the July twenty-second meeting of the ZBA that should be updated to July twenty-one.
My second.
All in favor by roll call vote. Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yeah, aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, very good. We did put on the, on the, on the agenda, reorga- you know, the reorganization of the board. Uh, Craig is currently the clerk, I'm obviously the chair, Craig's not available.
Hey David, do we need to do this tonight?
We don't have to do, I was just.
I, I gotta tap out.
Okay. Um, I, I, I agree with you, it's, it's. I think all we have to do is after June thirtieth, so. Uh, I agree with you.
Yeah, no, it's, it just stinks that it's on such a long night, but, you know, it's just.
So, so then the only thing left is, the next meeting will be, uh, is August eighteenth, Katie? That's what you've got on that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and, and you don't, do I understand it correctly that you don't really have much at the moment?
Just have one application, um, I believe, I didn't bring it with me. It is, I believe it's a special permit that was previously denied. Um, is over the two-year time limit, and is coming back um with just a few modifications.
Okay. All right, so we'll plan on meeting on August eighteenth, is everyone clear for that?
Yes.
All right, apologies for the long meeting. All right.
Funky, funky, funky one.
Okay.
Your moment, Paul.
I make a motion to close uh tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor by roll call vote, say aye. Paul?
Aye.
Debbie? Doris?
Aye.
Mike, say an aye, I can say an aye, I'm tapping out. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, David. See you good, nice to see everybody. After summer margaritas again.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.